Where's Keith? Where's Keith at? I didn't see his car.
Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is October 29, 2025. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Council members Donnell.
Here.
May you.
Here.
Kilrain.
Here.
Blastra.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Thanking.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item four is business. Four A is a variety of discussions. Mr. City Attorney, I believe you have some comments on one of the items that's on the agenda today?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you very much. It's number two. This pertains to the amendments to the charter school ordinance. I'm still going through some of the proposed amendments and the reasoning behind it. So I ask that it be removed from today's committee of the whole and reset for the November 12th committee of the whole. By then I should have finality to it and then have the ability to present it to all the members.
Okay. I'll look for a consensus to
Sure.
remove that item and place it on the November 12th committee of the whole. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Councilmember Kilrain.
Yeah, I think with the numbers of people in the audience probably here for the findings at a review committee, I may be asked to move that up front so we could do that first. Get out of the way.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that to move that to the first item of discussion? All right. With that being said, first item of discussion is the Charter Review Commission recommendations. I know there was a presentation that was provided and I believe our chair is going to go through that presentation, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Vigil.
Good morning, Council, Mayor. See if I recall my council days and do this for you. Looks like I got there. Presentation here. All right, perfect. Look, that's the millennial in me. All right, good morning. All right, so we're going to go ahead and get started with the recommendations of the Charter Review Commission. First off, I'd like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity, Councilmember Long as well for being able to be with us. And then Councilmembers, thank you for sitting in when Long could not. Thank you guys for that. I also want to thank the members that are here. If I can ask them to stand real quick. And thank them and then the people who couldn't make it today. We have our commissioners and really just for the public and for you guys, it was just a great opportunity and conversation and debate that we were able to take place. Thank you, guys. And then be able to have the discussion openly and fairly and really just try to bring something forward for you guys to make the decision as best possible. And I'll go ahead and move forward real quick. We have the current proposal and this is, or excuse me, the current written in the charter at the 401 and the first recommendation is, the proposal is very simple, is single-member districts, allowing council members to be elected by their district and only by their district instead of citywide. And then that is the first recommendation. When we move to the second recommendation, we have the change to where a candidate or council member shall have the, be full-time residents of the district. So currently, right now, as a council member can be elected, as long as they live the previous calendar year in the city, we're recommending that you move forward with a proposal that the the candidate for council would have to live in their district for one year in the previous calendar year. So we look at the next amendment. So it has to do with 405 and the candidate qualifications and elections. I have listed below the current charter information. The, what we are looking at is for the proposal is a submission and require proof of residency. Right now, it's just a voter registration card. We're asking that the amendment would include that you'd have to have two forms of an ID and we've listed those forms in the proposal. We also ask that there is a sworn affidavit sign. So that way, if a member running for council would have to swear that they are part of their residency, that they follow the guidelines of the charter, that way, if there was any misconception or an issue going forward after the election, the council would have the ability to look back and have, you know, to go after that council member if that were ever happen again. So we look at 406. This is with the mayor, Mayor Protem. This is just language cleaning up to allow the mayor Protem to be selected after the election with the new council taking place. The proposal's there. When we look at 408, there are going to be two amendments in this, this chapter here, this section. So our first section is discussing the pay in section A. The current rate is 32.6, 36 for mayor and this is before the COLA, when this was brought forward in 2015. And then you guys understand it's moved up and it's in the $40,000 range. The proposal is to move that to $70,000 and $80,000 for mayor and to keep the same, the same policy in place. So, and for the public and for everybody who's wondering, well, how did we come up with those numbers? So, and this will, you know, first, the commission took over, we put the 50 top cities. We had a lot of data and information, a lot of that same data and information you've already had from the stipend conversations a few years ago. And then what we did was, we took the average of what the body of the commission thought was an appropriate amount of pay to move forward with. So that is the, the 70,000, 80,000 is the average of the nine commissioners and that is what we bring forward to you and for you guys to have that discussion. As you all know and the public knows, this could be amended by you if you feel like it needs to be higher or if you feel like it needs to be lower, that discussion we leave to you. The second amendment that we are proposing in this is in addition to the charter. This is currently not in the charter. It's section C, and I'll underline, and this is, and if I can read it, the mayor and council members shall be, shall not increase the salary, any retirement benefits, any stipend, or any other type of compensation paid to its members unless such increase is approved by ordinance. So what we're doing now is, if you, and this is a protection for the people, is if there were any type of stipend or conversation about your, your compensation package in the future for any council for the next 100 years, they would have the opportunity to be able to change that through ordinance. This will allow public debate, public comment, and then we have put it in there where it requires a super, a super majority, so you have to have six affirmative votes for that. And it also would not affect the council that's voting for it. It would affect the next council after the general election. We felt that was a good, good couple protections in place to, one, allow conversation by the public, to, two, to make sure that there's a majority vote by you and to ensure that the public, that this isn't affecting you currently or any future council, it would affect the next council that comes into place. 411, 411, when we talk about vacancies and forfeiture of office, we wanted to make sure to clean up a little of the language and then make it a little bit better and propose the timeline if there were any issues when, if an issue comes up for council, which we hadn't passed with the council member in District Four. Not the current one, the previous one. And then, so what we're looking at is a couple different proposals. When we talk about the vacancies, just lining it up, the office of mayor and council members shall become vacant and then it describes how in the process in which we move forward. The, a couple changes that we see here is that the first one is the, the ability for a council member to come to meetings currently, that the, it says the regular council meeting. We're asking that if a council member misses three unexcused absences, that the council then has the power to move forward with, you know, discussing that, that conversation, whether that council member needs to be forfeited of office or not. What this allows is instead of, because, and we've talked about in the past where, you know, you can miss, you know, half your meetings and still be a member of council without any repercussion, where this allows for three consecutive meetings that the city council holds. So it's not just the regular meetings anymore. It would be the COW meetings, the shade meetings, special meetings, regular meetings, and anything that's noticed to the public for a council meeting, a failure of three with unexcused absence would give you the power to be able to have that conversation as a community, whether or not that council member needs to be, you know, forfeited of office or not. And then if, and we look at the language for, you know, moving forward, we take that out and then we add, just, just the way we do it is, is the ability and how we would hold. One, if you appoint somebody or if there's a special election regarding that, that seat that is vacant and, and how we move forward with that. The biggest change is we went from 120 to 180 days following the occurrence of a vacancy regarding to having an election. And I know, and, and there might be like some confusion in the public about this, about like, oh, was, you know, we've never had really a special election for a vacant seat. We've always filled that seat through council appointment. But the, the language does exist in the charter and we wanted to make sure it's cleaned up and a little bit easier and, and more, more thorough for the ability of council if they choose that path in the future. When we move to the last section, it's 412, and this is just really, and I told most of you, is just allowing the teeth for the council if there is an issue regarding council member and a break of the charter where they have to forfeit office. This allows you the ability to be able to review that and go through that process as a council if you need to forfeiture the, the office and do that. Now, a lot of people, and one of the big things is we make sure that we acquire a six-vote super majority to be able to unseat a council member or mayor. But again, it isn't just the council decision. It would go to the courts after if there were some legal issue regarding that. So that was the proposal on the eight, the eight different amendments that we have for you. And if you, we stand by. If you have any questions, concerns, I know through conversation, there might be some issues and maybe some, not issues, but concerns or topics of discussion where you guys would want to go ahead and move forward with different areas of expertise or however you want to do. The attorney's office is standing by for those type of questions. And then, again, on behalf of the commission, you know, we thank you so much for the opportunity. I think on behalf of the public, being able to bring this forward and having a good community conversation about these amendments is really the best, best and best use of not only the city time, but your guys' time as well. So thank you again. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation that outlines the findings of the commission. And first, I want to thank everyone who volunteered to be on the Charter Review Commission board. Thank you for your, your time and dedication. Understand this was a voluntary board. You took times out of your schedule in order to, to be a part of the discussion. So I just want to thank each and every member for your, for your time and dedication. With that, I think what we'll do maybe is I'll open it up if there's any direct questions for the chair or the board. And then after that, I'll open up for any further discussion that we as a council want to have. So with that, I'll open up for any questions to the board. Councilmember Kilrain.
Yeah. Rich, if you wouldn't mind, when you looked at the comparative compensation, was that, what was the basis of that and how was that done? Was it, was that done through a third party? Or was that something that you guys had pulled together past information or how is it done?
Great, great question, councilmember. So what we asked staff to do, staff pulled all together the information and we took the top 50 cities and we looked at not only their compensation, we also looked at budgets, what their annual budgets were compared to ours, you know, just to see if there was apples to apples, oranges to oranges. And then just really diving into the details on what the compensations of each of those cities were. So it was the top 50 and it was pulled, the information was pulled from city staff.
So you all did really an analysis of that data and then presented those and came up with the consensus as to what it should be?
Yes, sir. So, yeah, that is exactly what happened.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions for the Charter Commission?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Hold on, we got councilmember Donnell. He's, go ahead, sir. Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll move on for any council discussion now on these topics. Councilmember Donnell.
Yeah, I just wanted to get an idea of, of the scope of what happens next. Just for the efficiency of this discussion we're having today, because I'm certainly, thank you for your work. There's a lot I'm thinking that needs to happen now. The public needs to really drill down into what, what they think about it and before we get to any, any kind of conclusion. So I just wanted to make sure that we have some kind of a, some kind of objective, some kind of timeline, so we have an effective meeting and not just spurring without having the public get into it.
Yeah, I think it's a great comment. I think one of the things that I was trying to make sure that we achieved today is how we're going to move forward, number one, and number two, a timeline. We know we have until April as far as being able to follow supervisor of elections on any referendums for the primary or the general. So I think between now and then, and of course, once this council decides exactly what we want to put forward, then the city attorney's office has to articulate that, I believe 75 words or less for, for any particular referendum. So at some point, and I don't know if today is that day, you know, they presented eight items. At some point, we are going to have to say yes or no to those specific eight items. And then once we do that, then I think we have to drill down even further this, to say, is that exactly how we want the referendum to read? Do we want to add things, subtract things? So that's how the process. As we all know, the Charter Commission makes the recommendations, we make the decision. So I think that's something we need to keep in mind while we're having the discussion and then try to come up with a timeline today of how we're going to move forward. So again, there's eight items. I know the city attorney and speaking with him over the last couple of days, the direction that he needs is, is there a consensus by this council to move any or all of these eight items forward? And also, is there any additional items that this body wants to discuss for a possibility of a referendum? I know this, speaking with the city manager, I believe the staff may even have some recommendations. So I think we're in the beginning stages here and we're going to have to go through this process over the next several months to make sure that we, I think, circled down on exactly what we want. And then we have to give it to the city attorney to articulate it in a referendum and bring that back for approval. So I think that's the process. Anything else you'd like to add to that, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. And I want the members of the council to know, I have not validated nor verified the validity of any of the language that's been proposed to you at this point in time. The reason why I have not done that is because I do not have consensus of at least five of you prepared to move an item forward. So until that happens, I can assure you of one thing, the language that you have been presenting right now more likely than not will not be the final ballot language or the amendment to the charter because I need to make sure that it will survive a constitutional challenge in the event that that would occur. So I want you all to understand that what you see and what the proposal is, will at least, and I'm relatively certain, will not be the final amendment to the city's charter if there's at least five of you that are supportive of that. So I haven't looked at any of it because I don't know where any of you are all at on that. When there is at least five of you that are prepared for me to move forward with an amendment to any of the portions of our charter beyond even what's here, I will have to bring that before you all by way of an ordinance. That ordinance will have express ballot language. Yes, I'm limited to 75 words and you all will have to approve that. In the past, we've done it at the committee of the whole and then ultimately it'll have to go for a first reading and then also a second reading. So there is a process associated with it. I know that you're seeing this for the first time. I don't know if you're all prepared to move forward on it right now. There may be a lot of things that you may want to consider and think about. We are limited to nine, five in the primary, four in the general. So we are, have those limitations presently as it exists right now. So I would encourage you to be mindful of that limitation as well moving forward.
And I think at the end of this, so you have enough time. Once we make a decision exactly what we want and what we don't want, how much time do you need? Where would you like to see us make our decision in order to give you enough ample time?
I would love to at least have you all identify one or two for sure that you want to see amendments so I can get going on that immediately. I know we only have one committee of the whole left, which is November 12th, before the end of the year. If I can get a little bit of clarity on one or two, whether or not we do it on November 12th, I could then hopefully have a draft before you at the first of the year and we could start hammering away on, on things that you definitely want before the electorate in the primary or the general. So, and again, we're limited to nine. So that, that's, that's the bottom line. There's nothing we can do beyond that. But the sooner I know that one, at least one or two, I can get it all before you so that you are supportive of the language in the charter amendment.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, I know we haven't approved our 2026 calendar, but could you give us our tentative dates for January for any committee of the whole meetings?
Yes, just one moment.
And I think that's important to probably ask the question if, if we have two committee of the whole, you know, just say the third January, the third week of January is our second committee of the whole. If we were finalized with whatever our recommendation is by then, I know you're hoping sooner rather than later, but that, would that still give you enough time between the third week of January? Because that gives you a couple of months to work on that and then bring it back before the April deadline for approval.
It should. And, you know, and I remember we had this exercise, I believe it was, was it a year ago or over a year ago? There were four different versions of four different amendments and there was not enough consensus by you all. So I have to be mindful of that as well, that there has to be at least five of you that are supportive of that language. So whether, and then I'll ask this question, do you want it at the committee of the whole? Do you want me to do it at first reading? I could always make changes between first reading and second reading of that language. It's just a matter of, of how much time you all want to dedicate to that at this point in time. I'm flexible. But to answer your question, that should be sufficient.
Okay.
Once I know.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
On the proposed calendar, we have a January 14th Cal and that's it for January due to our budget workshops at the end of the month.
Okay.
Then following in February, the 11th and the 25th.
Okay. And not that, that we're compelled. I think a committee of the whole is probably a good place to have the discussions, even if we had to add one. You know, earlier in the day, if we have a regular, you know, have a special meeting just on this topic, I'd be okay with that, you know, if, if need be, because it looks like we only have November 12th and, and January 14th. So unless we think we can get it done by that January 14th.
Mayor, and I apologize for interrupting you. Let me provide a little bit of clarity in speaking with the clerk. You mentioned April, April 20th. That is the deadline for the primary. So for at least five of them, the maximum is April 20th. Now, we've got four that we can put on the general. That deadline is July 6th. So we do have more time. And then you all have to kind of identify which ones you want on the primary, which you want on a general, and that will kind of reset our timeline for getting that all accomplished in the appropriate amount of time, depending on whether it's a primary or the general. So we do have two different deadlines depending on where we want to place items.
What was the general?
The general is July 6th is our deadline. For the primary, it's April 20th. And there's, you know, there's a logic behind which ones you all want to put where.
Okay. So with that information, I'll open up for discussion.
Mayor, in my, my little time, because I'm not going to say anything.
Yeah, you're, you're.
Just want to say thank you all so much. That was a lot of hard work. So we really appreciate you. And to the council, I'm not going to say much because this is a, thank you for the process and I agree. At this point, I just really want to hear from the people because now they have it, it's on the record. So you guys at home, get into it and give us some direction so we'll have some, we'll be better informed to make a better decision for the community. I just wanted to let council know that's where I am today. All right? Thank you, Mayor. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Lehman.
Yeah. I have three different items I want to bring out, but I'm going to bring out the elephant in the room first. On the salary increasing, thank you very much to the Charter Review for going through all of this. At any rate, if all the non-bargaining employees in the city got a 7.25% raise, personally, I think the council should be right along with that. Because not only that, there's nowhere in the charter that specifies whether council is full-time or part-time. And I, I just, just don't think that close to doubling the salary is, is right. I, I just don't agree with that at all. But the second item with the being in your district for one year, I don't agree with that either. I think it should be five years because I think you need the time to know your district. And then on single-member districts, if it's a single-member district, then you're representing only your district. So if someone calls you from another district, citizen calls you from another district, which happens to me all the time, what am I supposed to say to them? Well, I'm sorry, you're going to have to contact your own council person. I can't help you. Or we have to ask permission from the council person for that district? I think that's, it, it just puts it in too weird a situation. Thank you.
Councilmember Kilrain.
Yeah, I'd rather stick to just talking about process at this time and not getting into the meat. Just, just a few things. I think that if you look at the eight elements that were recommended, there are probably three of them that are, you know, somewhat reasonable to get out of there fairly quickly. And I won't even take a cut of those now, but I think we can probably sort them in that manner, come up with the three or four that we can maybe deal with upfront. I think that the two sticky ones are going to be the salary, the base salary, and then the whether or not we do it by ordinance and that type of thing. I'm, I appreciate everything that the Charter Review Committee has done. I, I also commend you for all the hard work and it's not an easy task and you put a lot of time in on it. I would feel more comfortable if we had a more non-involved, third-party eye looking at the numbers. third-party eye looking at the numbers from a comparative standpoint, almost like we do with the bargaining units, go outside and maybe have one of our professionals look at comparative salaries and do it in a, a manner that has a lot of dotting the i's and crosses, crossing of the t's and some of the background stuff on, on what those councils are composed of and how their time is put in. So I, I would like to see that. Maybe that would elongate that being one of the later items that we cross the bridge on. So I'd like to take a look at that and maybe recommend that we look at doing that or chartering it, you know, focusing on that in the beginning so that they could get their work done. And that may take a couple of months to do, I'm not sure. I know you, Mike, you have a lot of background data on this already, but we'd still have to recommission, right, to have a third party do it.
There was data collected and distributed, the council, that I'm aware of from the, was the attorney you guys pulled together for, for the stipend. My office has never pulled anything together. But if you, if you wanted to get somebody like we hired for police, fire, general, and non-bargaining to, to pull data, that's, we can accomplish that.
That's where I'm headed. I'd like to throw that out there and see what the rest of the council members feel about that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Laster.
Thank you, Mayor. My apologies, Mayor. Just to clarify, what, what are we doing today? Would it be more efficient for us to go through all eight items down a row and say yes, no? Or are we, are we doing the discussion now, or are we going to pause and, and, and bring this back to a later cal? I, I wasn't clear on, on what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I think what we're probably, several things we're trying to achieve today is develop a process moving forward in a timeline. And I think if there are, very similar to what Councilmember Kilring just suggested, if there's any other avenues we want to explore in order to have a better understanding on these eight items or any additional items that we maybe have, I think we need to, you know, direct staff or the city attorney's office to provide that information to us or complete a study. I think we, we have an opportunity today, if, if this body so desires to go down the list before we do too much background or too, too much work to see if there is a consensus of five. You know, we may go through this today and say, one, there's not enough information to make a decision, or if there is enough information, there could be some council members that would say items X or Y is, they're not interested at all. So why have staff go through all that?
Yes.
Work for something that there, there's not a consensus for, to at least, I think what we need to make a decision on today is, do we want to explore any of these items and move them forward? And I'm not saying that it's exactly how it was presented today, but is there some type of a basis where you at least want to look at it further? So that may be a good.
So that's the input you're looking for then from us?
I think that would be helpful for the city attorney, because he had asked, if there's a consensus of five members, then he could start, and his office could start working on those particular items.
So do you recommend that we go down the list and go down each one, through each one of us, or you just want us to say which ones we definitely are not supportive of?
Why don't we do this for now? Let's get a consensus of the body of how we want to do that. So maybe if that's your recommendation, that we do that.
Yes, sir. I recommend we go down the list and then just give thumbs up, thumbs down, and, and that way we don't waste time having staff prepare something that we don't have consensus for. That would be my recommendation.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I think it's a, I think we're looking for hard no's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anybody who has a hard no on this? And if the consensus has a hard no on any one of the items, that'll allow him not to waste his time on it.
Right.
Yeah. You want our hard no's?
You have the floor, so if you'd like to, Jordan?
My hard no would be single-member districts at this time. I don't feel that we're ready yet for that. With the amount of build-out we still have to do, my concern is, you know, being at-large is probably better for us until we get to that point. That's just my feeling. I, I certainly can see both sides of it. I can see, you know, why you would want that single district, single-member district representation, because you can really be in with your district. But I feel like, you know, for me personally, I have the old golf course, and I live by it. So when I walk by people's homes, they know who I am. And I feel like I have a very good pulse on my district. But as Councilmember Lehman said, I do get phone calls from other districts, and I'm certainly not going to turn them away. I do always suggest that they contact their, their representative, but oftentimes, you know, they didn't know, or they got my number from someone, and I'll certainly help them and guide them. If, there's been many times I've, in fact, in the beginning, that I got a concern from one of Councilmember Caduque's people, and, and I said, let me, let me encourage you to speak with her, and was able to connect them, and they worked out the issue. The other thing that I would be a hard no on at this time is salary increase for us. I just don't think our economy right now, I don't think it's a good time for this, for our residents. I mean, we were just asking people in the north, northwest and east to pay for these connections for the UEP. And although we all know it's definitely a full-time job, none of us up here signed up to do this for the money. So I just think that when our economy's stronger, I think that's something we can revisit, when we're not having to increase fees or assessments to our residents. I think that's something we can look at. But those are my two hard no's. I also want to thank you all for your participation and for allowing us to select you and for putting all of this together. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Stanky.
Well, I, I had a question prior to us going to the hard no. That's what my light was about.
Okay. You still got that question?
I do.
Okay.
It's actually a comment and a question. One of the questions is for the city attorney, and that is, as it relates to that 75-word limit when it's placed, when I see a section like the vacancies with such a huge change, if you will, elimination and change, like that, that busts 75 words. Is the 75 words just the intro to the changes? How does that work?
It's the ballot language.
So, for instance, when I look at, at our, at our back of material, and I'm looking at 411 vacancies, forfeiture of office, filing of vacancies, and I look at the, you have three items there, and number three has, has a sub A, and then there's a four. Every one of those lines is about 20 words.
Right.
So how do you get that on the ballot for people to understand it?
It's, it's a summary of the changes to the, the actual charter. So you have to limit the summary to 75 words to summarize what it is that you're accomplishing by way of the amendment to the necessary charter provisions.
So then it's up to the electorate to research any details that they would want to know from the summary that you have to establish that doesn't exceed 75 words?
That's correct.
Okay.
Some will require less than 75.
Right.
Some would require me to maintain that 75 words for the ballot language in order to try to accomplish a legitimate explanation that's defensible under the law for the proposed amendments.
Okay. And, and as it relates to those vacancies, I noticed something in here that, and, and maybe Chair Leon can, can help with this. And that is, the language deals with if a, if a special election is required and there is a need for a primary, the way that it's written, as I understand it, it, the, the verbiage actually gives you less time to get it done if a primary is required than if a primary is not required. And it would seem to me like if a primary is required, you would need more time than less time. And the reason I come up with that is, under Section 3, it's, it's, it's to be held no sooner than 90 days, but no later than 180 days. And then if a primary is required, it's to be held no sooner than 90 days, but no later than 120 days. And then the, and then the, the primary, and then, and then the final election has to be held within 45 days. 120 days and 45 days is 165 days, which is actually less time than if a primary is not needed. So any, was there thought to that, or?
And I don't want to speak on behalf of, of the commission. Again, remember when I said I haven't validated the language?
Okay.
I don't know where you all are at. And I said, more likely than not, you will not, you will be seeing something that is different than what you have here in order for me to ensure that it is in compliance with the law.
Okay.
So that's why I, I want to make sure you all understand that. You know, while I did have an, an attorney present, I did speak with him and say, more likely than not, I'm going to have to alter the language to make sure that it is clear, because I cannot, I cannot take the risk of it being subjected to a challenge.
Well, if that's, if that's, so if this one moves forward, I would just say, we need to pay attention to that, that timing, that if we got to have a, a primary and then a final, it would seem like we need more time rather than less time based on, based on what I read.
If it makes logical sense for even an amendment to that.
Okay. And, and then the other had to do with the candidate qualifications, and it was talking about the, the IDs required. And, and I, I don't have a problem with having to live in the district for a year. But as it, when it talked about the, the, the proof of residency, so to speak, we had an issue with driver's license and voter registration the last go-round that, that we had with this, with the thought that that driver's license and voter registration was changed just days before filing for candidacy. And so if those are going to be forms of evidence of residency, I think there needs to be some, if, if that's going to be included, there needs to be some type of verbiage there around the, the dates of those forms of residency that when they're turned in, if, if the date on, on that form of, of proof, so to speak, is not 12 months or longer, then that can't be used, I would, I would think. Because we, we had that issue in our last go-round. And the last is for, as it relates to the candidate qualifications, in our current verbiage, it talks about the council having the power to subpoena. Not so sure I understand that. I don't think we do. Do we? Because we had to rely upon the state's attorney's office to subpoena.
No.
We, if we were allowed, we didn't use it.
Correct. You ultimately turned that over to the state attorney. Well, first of all, there was an independent investigation. Then once an independent investigation was concluded, then it was ultimately turned over to the state attorney's office for further action. That doesn't mean that the city did not have the authority to do so, I think. And I wasn't here at the time. It was my understanding is that, that the council didn't want to necessarily take that role.
Okay. And so with the, with the thought that we would, that any council would, would feel the need to take that action, if the subpoena is not responded to, what's, what's the ramification?
It would be an independent legal action to enforce the validity of the subpoena in the circuit court. Sorry?
Oh. Okay. All right. Thank you. And so, I mean, while I have the floor, the only hard no that I have is single-member district. I understand that, and I believe that single-member districts are, are good, given the right municipality. But I also believe that at-large is good, depending upon the municipality. And the reason why I, I feel that the city of Cape Coral should remain in a at-large forum is because of, if you will, the inequality between services available and infrastructure throughout our city. So I, I believe at this point, since we were not a centreplex-oriented city, as most cities are, and the city does not grow with equality as it moves away from the center, for every member of this council to only be concerned about their own district and only elected by the electorate that would be looking forward to them only representing their district. I don't think we're in the position for that right now. Certainly in the southeast where I am, I still need to be aware of the needs of the northwest, the northeast, our central Cape area, with the thought of where do we want to use our resources? Where do we want to use, you know, the, the financial wherewithal that we have? And those citizens need to make sure that whoever's sitting in my seat is concerned about them as well and should have a vote in that. If we were a centreplex-oriented city, where everything moved from the center out and it was all equal slices of the pie, then I could see that. But I don't believe we, in our current condition, only being 55% built out, can afford for the residents to not have a say for all eight people that sit here. And that, that's, that's why I, that's why it's a hard no for me. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Caduque.
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you to the Charter Review Commission for your hard work and your volunteerism. It's very much appreciated. I jotted down each section before we decided that this is how we were going to go about it. And I think it's very important to note that we're talking about what we're going to put on the ballot, not what we believe or what we want. So do we want the voters to vote on this, yes or no? When it comes to Section 4.01, at-large versus single-member, while I personally think it should stay at-large, we could put it on the ballot to see what the voters want. 4.02, residency for a year, absolutely should go on the ballot. 4.05, proof of residency, absolutely should go on the ballot. 4.06, mayor pro tem, cleaning up the language, yes, should absolutely go on the ballot. 4.08, compensation, I believe the whole stipend thing happened because the voters didn't have a voice. So yes, it should absolutely go on the ballot. 4.11, vacancies and attendance, sure, we should absolutely hold our elected officials accountable. And 4.12, I strongly disagree with and don't think it should go on the ballot. And I told this to our chair. This was basically, if you have a supermajority, and, let me scroll back down to it. To me, when I read this, if a member charged with conduct constituting grounds for forfeiture of offices found by a supermajority of six, I feel that this is bullying language, and you could have six people bully against two or one council member up here, and I just strongly disagree with this. It should be up to the voters. And if someone has misconducted themselves, we are not judges, and the court system should take care of that, as well as the governor removing them from office. So 4.12 is a hard no for me. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Kilring.
Yeah, just, just going back in a similar fashion, I went through, just went through all eight. And I kind of listed the kind of easy knockoff ones versus the more difficult ones. And easy being something that, you know, we can talk about, probably reach consensus on fairly quickly. First of all, I, I am also a hard no in the, the single-member district. And for a lot of the reasons that were articulated by Councilman Stanky, I, I just think that we, at, at least at this stage in the game, until we're built out, it's very important to have an understanding of the full matter of issues in front of the city. And because we're making decisions every week up here on things that affect all of the residents, I think it's very important for us to continue to be at-large. So that, that's a hard no for me, too. With respect to the mayor pro tem, I think that's an easy one. I, I think that the language one that needs to be cleared up, certainly that can be done. It's something we want to move forward on pretty quickly. Residency, I don't think will be that much of an issue. We can argue about how long it should be. But I think that that's going to be another one we can clear up. As, as validation, I think with respect to correct ID and that type of thing, I think that's something else we can clear up fairly quickly. The, the two compensation pieces, the one being the base salary and the other being the ordinance, they're going to be the sticky, sticky ones, I think, and that are going to require more time to talk about and maybe a study prior to doing the, the salary piece. Vacancies, that probably is going to take a little bit longer because of the nature of the number of elements that are listed in that. I, I think that if we skinny that list up, that could be done fairly quickly. And judge of qualifications, I'm And judge of qualifications, I'm, I'm a bit uncomfortable with that, uh, also, um, and I, I don't necessarily think that that needs to be a voter, uh, referred mechanism. I think that we, we within this group, I think, can come to resolution on that. So, uh, if you look at, at where I'm heading on this thing, um, I think there are three or four that we can give direction to council, to, uh, city attorney on fairly quickly and, you know, get those off the, the table. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any, anyone else have any, uh, discussion? Or any other, uh, recommendations, uh, other than what's listed here today, or we could do that at a later date as well? All right. I guess, uh, it sounds like a few.
Go ahead.
This, I was just going to say, if we are going to have that discussion at a later date, sure, because I think we shouldn't be refined or confined to just what was on this list, but I don't want to engage in that if we're already kind of fragmented about what we're handling today.
Yeah, I think what we can do, uh, you know, I think what we're trying to do here is come up with that timeline. Again, uh, the hard no's, as councilmember Stanky put it, um, if there's any hard no's, and then the ones that aren't a hard no, gives us time to digest it, uh, maybe, uh, give city attorney a little bit of time to look at and see if he has any recommendations on, on the ones that we're at least going to explore moving forward. Not necessarily they're going to be, uh, on the ballot, but at least to take a look at them, see if we want to add, subtract, or move it forward exactly the way it is. Uh, I think we could probably, uh, do that, uh, at our next, uh, meeting in November. Also, the next meeting in November, if there's anything that we want to add, any recommendations that the city manager may have that we want to look at, that maybe we haven't considered, uh, to place that on the, uh, November, uh, uh, committee of the whole meeting. So, I think today is, uh, maybe try to explore those hard no's. Uh, councilmember Long, you, uh?
That was it. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a speaking hour for, for hold your piece on the, uh, the add-ons.
Okay. Councilmember Darnell.
Yeah, um, we were in the middle of the exercise that hard no, and there were four people that hadn't responded yet, and I'm interested, and I'm one of them. So, for me, um, as I stated earlier, I don't have any hard no. As an individual, yes, but I don't have any hard no's on either of them for today's discussion. So, I'm on board with all of them. I will just say on four point oh, zero-two, though, um, the idea of living in a district, if that moves city attorney, because I was in a district that changed district due to something that the council voted on, so technically with this, no, wouldn't even be technically, I would have not been able to run, because when they changed the district, they changed it, and I was only in that house for like five months. However, I've been in the same house for twenty years. So, I don't know how, and that's just something for downstream, but for the purpose of the exercise, I have no hard no's for today until we get back some input. I got to hear from the folks. Thank you.
Councilmember Lehman.
Yeah. Um, I agree with councilmember Kaduk that, other than language cleanup, things, everything has to go to a vote. Uh, I think the citizens need to be aware and they need to be allowed to vote on the different issues. Uh, I am a hard no on single-member districts. I am a hard no on the one-year in, in district, and I am a hard no on the salary. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Long.
Yeah, I guess I should have commented last time as far as the process. I mean, I understand the methodology behind doing the hard no to kind of clear it off the slate, but, uh, in that respect, I mean, if we're going to talk about these things anyways, I think we should talk about each one of them when we all discuss it. If it is a hard no, then that same logic applies. We'll dispense it pretty quickly and move on. But I, I think, um, to, especially to do it, just service to them to just basically come up here and say in so many words, oh, no, no, no. Um, if there was a discussion about single-member districts that we were, that some of us wanted to have, it would be a lot easier to have it in a setting where we had already set a date in the future that we were going to discuss these things in a little bit more length, because, you know, I might have an opinion on single-member districts, but if we're just dispensing it right out of the gate without having it on a set agenda to talk about it, um, then we might not be able to have some of that insight that, that others might not be able to see when they say no. So, I guess that, that was my only comment on that. I don't have any hard no's, that same reason. And then just, I understand the reasoning behind, uh, councilmember Kaduk's, but to the point that I just made, if we were to discuss this a little bit at length, and since we're going to be already discussing these items at that date in the future, then I would add context. For, for example, and the city attorney wasn't here, so I don't fault him for that, but the way that it went with, um, Cummings debacle was, uh, we, we theoretically could have held kangaroo court, uh, to councilman Stanky's question, but, uh, there was a memorandum that came out of the former city attorney's office that basically said, at the end of the day, even if we had held that kangaroo court, we didn't have the authority pursuant to the charter to act on it. So, we're all, so that, so that kind of context is some of the stuff that I'd like to bring up, um, when we kind of flush all of these out, hopefully, but, but obviously, we rule by majority here. But I don't have any hard no's. Thank you.
Councilmember Kilrain.
Yeah, uh, councilmember, member Darnell, uh, reminded me of something I, I heard in the, uh, as the, during campaigning, and that was whether or not consecutive, the, the term limitation, uh, in that if you serve in one district, uh, for two terms, and then you have an absence and then come back in another district, whether you're still eligible. And by our charter, you are currently, and I, 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 I don't know if the commission hadn't, didn't address that. Did, did you guys look at that at all?
Councilmember, yes, um, we did discuss that, and we did not move that position forward. And just for your clarification, everybody else is, the, the charter commission did go through every line of the charter and had many discussions, and, and what you didn't see today is just because it didn't move forward with the commission.
Okay. And unless someone else has an appetite to review that again, I, I, I would just let it sit the way it is. I, I think you have to be pretty young to be able to do that, so, you know, uh, councilman Darnell kind of fit the, the role in it, so, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other lights on, I guess the question, uh, the million-dollar question here is, do we want to, uh, and I've heard some individuals talk about hard no's and some have not, uh, is that something that, uh, we want to do today, uh, by majority consensus? Uh, or do we want to continue this conversation to a later date? Do we want to have, uh, have a dialogue today on some of those items that could be a hard no? Um, you know, do we want to have that conversation, uh, on November twelfth? Um, you know, what's, what's the, what, what is the consensus of the body, how we want to move forward, forward with that? I, you know, I have, uh, probably, uh, two hard no's and, and probably a lot of questions on the other, on the other, uh, remaining six items. Uh, is that something we want to do, is do the hard no's and go down the line?
I, I think that'd be a way to do it. I mean, I'd be, I'd support that.
Is everybody good, at least saying if they have a hard no or not, and see where, see where the consensus is? I'm sorry?
We can go again.
Yeah, I said, I'm, I feel like I already did. I think several of us have already said our hard no's.
Just to kind of wrap it up.
Yeah, yeah. I see. You want to just get like a tally? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Mayor? Okay.
Yep.
I've been keeping it, Mayor, but.
Yep. I mean, I've, I've kept somewhat of a tally, um, and so we can go down the list and, and also, you know, if you, if you want to reiterate why you, why you're saying a no, uh, when we're going down the list, that's fine, too.
Are we starting at the top?
Yep.
Four point zero one, um, at-large versus single-member, I'm not a hard no. We can put it on the ballot and leave it up to the people. However, I think that when you're running for office, it's great because it's a lot less costly. Um, I think when you're elected, it's a, a lot different. What are we going to do during the budget season? Hey, I'm District Seven, how much money am I going to get? I think that's why we should leave it up to the people, but I think that they should think thoroughly through what we're actually proposing, so I'm not a hard no on it.
And you're not a hard no on any of the other items?
Only four point twelve.
Uh, number eight. Okay. Yep. Okay. Uh, councilmember Stanky.
My only, uh, hard no is on, uh, single-member district.
Okay.
Same here.
Uh, for me, uh, my, uh, two hard no's would be, uh, the single-member districts. Uh, I think, uh, since our city is continually to, to be, uh, built out, we're only about fifty-five percent built out, um, I think, uh, single-member districts works well in cities that are already built out completely. Uh, so that's my belief, uh, that it could be a hindrance, because, you know, you take, uh, where a lot of the, uh, building is going on in our city now, it's in the northeast and northwest. Uh, I, you know, historically, you've seen in other cities where, uh, when you have that, that single-member district, you're really fighting for, for your district, and you, you're probably, you could neglect some of the other areas of the city, and I don't want to see us do that while we're building out. Once we're built out, then I would probably support single-member districts, but at this point, I do not. Uh, the last item, uh, number eight to four point twelve, uh, I'm a hard no on that. Uh, I believe that instead of empowering six councilmembers, uh, in order to, to basically vote out a, a member of council, that should be held, uh, to a independent, um, agency or the governor's office, and, uh, I think, uh, that, that's where it should stay. So, for me, a hard no on those two items. The other six, I have some questions on. Uh, when you're talking about residencies, some of the legalities, I know there's case law on it, uh, what we can do, what we can't do. I think we have to have our city attorney explore those, and I do have a few questions on the other ones. So, uh, the other six, uh, I would entertain, uh, future conversations, uh, but, but item one and item eight, uh, I'm a no.
Yeah, I'll go to hard no on eight, too. I, I, I didn't realize the part about the subpoena and everything was already here, so thank you. I, I'm going to go hard no on that.
All right. Councilmember Long.
I, I don't have any hard no's at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
I specified my three hard no's, and in addition to that, four point one-two, uh, I would also be a hard no.
Okay. Councilmember?
Well, yeah, I, I told, no, but I did want to say, um, I think it's going to be a mistake, um, counsel, if we today, in a matter of an hour, because they put in the work and, uh, that single member is really hot in the community, and I know we personally have feelings, but I think we're making a mistake if we don't at least put it out and have a discussion on the count. However, because it's going to be five-four, so I'm, just those of you all saying hard no's, you know, but we, you know, we deal with what the body wants to do, so I'm on with the body, but I'm saying that's going to come back on us. And as far as this, though, I don't have any for today, for that very point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I stated mine earlier, hard no on salary increase in single-member districts at this time. Thank you.
All right. Uh, so, I guess, uh, with that being said, uh, do we want to take those, uh, it sounds like we want to take those items. Uh, Madam City Clerk, if you have been keeping tally, maybe you could tell us where we're
So, for the single-member district, I had five hard no's. Stanky, Kilrain, Gunter, Lehman, and Lastra. And then for the judgment of qualifications, I had four hard no's. Kaduk, Kilrain, Gunter, and Lehman. So, those are the only two that had, um, well, one had a majority, one had a tie.
And, uh, Mr. City Attorney, since that, that particular vote was a four-to-four, uh, there's not a majority consensus either way, so what's, what's your recommendation there?
Even if I were to bring something before you, it sounds like it would fail. I, unless you all want to have a further conversation and see if the needle moves.
Okay. All right.
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with the first one, which is clear, there's clearly five, unless someone's, unless two are going to change.
Right.
Uh, I don't know that that's going to happen, at least at this point in time. Um, and, and maybe, to your point, uh, since it, it appears that there's only seven remaining, if we want to start addressing them, maybe like to every committee of the whole and, and having a further-on discussion on two of the proposals and maybe some other proposals, I, I'm trying to, trying to get you guys to the finish line. I, I just hope I can get you all there.
Okay.
And I think you have to all really identify, and I, I know I'm throwing a lot at you right now, there's a distinction between putting something on a primary versus putting, putting something on a general.
Yeah.
And the timelines are different, and there are certain implications associated with what you put on a primary and what you put on a general. And I don't think all of you really have, in my humble opinion, sat back and really contemplated what should be on a primary and what should be on the general, because that matters. And so, and the reason why I bring that up is because I've got deadline differences depending on which one it is that you all choose to put on what. So, maybe that's something that you all want to discuss as a, as a matter of what we want on a primary versus what we want on a general on the twelfth. I, I, I was trying to, certain thresholds, that one is probably the most important one. What do you want on a primary? What do you want on a general? And then what do you all want that's not even here?
Right. I think that's something that, uh, sounds like November twelfth that we were going to bring back, if there's any other items. You know, it's hard, at least for me, it's hard for me to choose now what's on a primary and what's on a general, because I don't, I don't know what we had to pick from. Uh, once, once we know exactly what we had to pick from, then, then I think as a body we could, uh, have a conversation and make those, make those decisions.
And understanding that, you know, we're, we're limited to five on the primary and four on the, the, the general, so, you know, we, we're at that, right now, as it stands right now, depending on whether or not, uh, four point twelve really survives, you're looking at six. And if all of you will believe that we should move forward on the sixth, that means to the most you're really going to be able to add is another three more.
Right. Okay. So, I guess, uh, do we really then answer the question with number eight, do we, uh, since it was a four-to-four, uh, councilmember Kilrain, I see your light on, so.
Yeah, yeah. Let me comment more on, on eight. Basically, after really thinking it through now, uh, I, I would not be wanting to sit up here and judge, uh, a fellow councilperson as to whether or not they violated, uh, what we can, consider, what we consider to be good standards of operation. Um, I think that there are going to be floor-cut evidence that could be done through a judicial process that's probably better at doing that, and, uh, let, let law enforcement, judicial process govern that. I think it's, it's the best way to do it. It's the way that our, our, our system has prescribed, uh, prior to this, and I just think it makes sense for, for the legal basis to be solid and well-grounded, as opposed to some kind of popularity issue or, or some kind of a debt issue cropping in on it. Uh, I think it's a cleaner process, and I, I think the charter is clean in that manner, so I, I've been supportive of that, and that's the logic for it. I don't know if that's going to convince anyone else that they might do it, but, uh, I, I really flipped my mind on it, because, uh, again, I can see where, you know, someone gets on the outside and from a, a relationship standpoint with the rest of council, and maybe the reasons aren't all that valid from a legal standpoint, so I, that, that's my reasoning behind it, so thank you.
Yeah, I think it's also, real quickly, uh, reading that again, it says if a member charged with conduct, uh, constituting grounds of forfeiture, I think the key word there is charged.
Charged.
Not convicted.
Yep.
There's a huge difference in the two. And as we know, our judicial system, you're innocent until proven guilty. Uh, so, that's another reason I have a little bit of a, a problem with that wording in there, uh, because it says charged and not convicted. Uh, so, I just wanted to point that out as, as we're having that discussion. Councilmember Kaduk.
Thank you, yes. I, um, actually spoke to Chair Leon and our attorney when we had our one-on-one and said the exact same thing that you just said. That's why I have an issue with it, and I'm a hard no. I actually put on my light because I wanted to just reiterate, and our city attorney did, this is just what the Charter Review Commission brought forward, this is not even including anything else that we could possibly want to put onto the ballot, so I just wanted to make sure that we all know that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, for reasons, uh, further stated, I would also, uh, put in a hard no on, uh, four-twelve. Um, and as it relates to the four-four, just the comment that I would have on that is, while this is not a voting meeting, if we say, if we, uh, kind of applied the same principle that we do during voting meetings as it relates to ties, uh, a tie fails, and so what we were trying to do is trying to determine whether something should be eliminated completely, and so a four-four tie would be a fail, that it should be eliminated completely. That's, that would be my take on it. If it's a four-four tie, then it stays in the running for further discussion. That's where I would stand on that.
Okay. Councilmember Long.
Um, I guess just speaking back to the procedure, I mean, we got a lot of work to do, and so I think trying to break it down, even, um, as, as was proposed by a couple different meetings, or even if we talk about it in November, really that's just tie level and. or even if we talk about it in November, really, that's just tie level, and then he comes back with language. We, to his point, the city attorney's point, we did this last year, or maybe the year prior, I think, with the referendum, and it turned out, especially with this body, you know, he comes with language, that language isn't great, so then we send him back to retool it, well, that's a couple of different weeks in between. He comes back, some of us are more likely to not change our minds somehow in between meetings, and now that language doesn't work, and that continues to perpetuate, now we run out of time. The point is, April's coming up pretty quickly, as you said, the April deadline?
April.
And the legal, yeah, and legal drafting and everything else, so we would almost need to have a special meeting, or like a workshop, whatever you want to call it, that just identifies charter review stuff for the whole meeting, realistically, within the next month preferably, or in January, just to really start, because even if we do have that, you still have to go back, you still have to draft. You're coming back, we're, we're looking at the language, there's gonna be tweaks, for sure. I just would hate to get to a point like we got to last time, where we're up against the wall, and we can't get a consensus on the language, even though a majority of us agree in principle to the idea, and as a result, we gotta wait another two years at a minimum to get it on the ballot. So I guess I would prefer to try to have a special meeting that just addresses purely all of these items and any other ones that we want sooner than later, and then at that point, we could start matriculating it over a couple of meetings, as far as language and things like that. That's it, thank you.
Yeah, and just two other comments for me. I kind of agree with Councilmember Steinke, the four-to-four vote. You know, if this was a voting meeting, you know, then it would have failed to remove it. So I think that we could at least move that particular item to the November 12th Committee of the Whole, where we have a, maybe a more detailed discussion on that.
You change his vote.
I'm sorry?
Bill changes his vote. Didn't you vote?
Did you change your vote? Or within, so does that make it possible?
I had a hard no to four-twelve.
Oh, so then it's five, so.
Five, yeah.
All right, I didn't realize, I thought he had voted for that before. Okay. All right, so that gives you a hard five for, for two items, the single-member districts and the judge of qualifications there, which was four-twelve. So with that being said, I guess by consensus, we'll move those two items for consideration. The other six will move forward for the November 12th discussion. One thing that, you know, that I'm struggling with, as well as the compensation piece of this, one of the things that we've always, always done is collect the data, analyze the data, see where we are. The other thing that we've done with compensations, more recently with all three of our unions, I think we're even gonna have a discussion today with the non-bargaining.
Yeah.
We're gonna be looking at data, we're gonna be looking at a study, and I appreciate how the, the commission, they said they looked at 50 cities, and then they made a determination amongst themselves on what they believed, and that's how they came up with that number, by looking at the data. I'd like to see that data. I think it would be in our best interest to, to have an outside third party, collect that data, bring that report back to us, and hopefully, we can get that done in a timely manner, so we can see what other cities today are paying other councils and other mayors, so we can make a good, informed decision, if that's the direction that we want to go. But I think before, we can say yes or no. For me, I gotta see the data and, and see where, where it kind of lies, and then, and then move whatever that may be forward to the voters, so that's kind of where I'm at. I want to at least see the data, so I just wanted to bring that up. Is, is that something the, the rest of my colleagues think is a good idea?
No, I agree. Well, all right.
And, you know, to me, that's a yes or no, maybe we can go down the line and say, we can direct the city manager and our HR director to maybe be able to, to bring that data back to us, so we can see exactly what it is.
I would love to see the data.
Hold on, you said, Mr. Mayor, if I could, or I can wait till my turn, but you had said basically hire an outside firm, and now you're saying our staff, and who's doing the data?
No.
That'd be important to me.
Yeah, I don't want our staff doing it, I want a third-party outside.
Independent.
Individual. Staff is only going to get the deal.
Compile.
Apply. Mr. City Manager?
Florida League of Cities may already have data.
Yeah, there's, there's ways to get that.
So we'll, we'll see if there's anything, before we would engage anybody, we would look to see if there's any, any relevant data out there already at one of the organizations we're part of. If there's not, then we, then we would go that route.
Okay. So maybe we get them to at least look Florida League of Cities to start with, see if, if they have, to me, the most important's gotta be current data, because if they look and, and the data's three years old, to me, I, I want to know current data, so hopefully, they'll have that, hopefully, it'll be fairly inexpensive, but if that data's not readily available, then I would want us to go look for it.
Well, it's one of the reasons why we belong in Florida League of Cities, is to have access to that data.
Right. As long as it's up to date, I would hope it would be, but I don't know. So maybe, to answer Councilmember Long's question, maybe we look, either we identify, since I'm on the Florida League of Cities, if you want me to try to reach out, do we want the city manager to do it? You know, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me.
I figure Mike Pritchard, if he did it, only.
I, I think that it would be better if we're not a part of that.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
Yeah.
Let, let staff reach out to the Florida League of Cities, see if that data's available.
If you're worried about who does it, and you're worried, you might have asked the auditor.
I'm sorry?
For, the auditor, so that you have, if you're worried about somebody challenging the data. Maybe have the auditor do it. Yeah.
Okay, that's a possibility. So I just want to take that on, I think that's important, since it was mentioned earlier in the conversation. Let's make sure we got the current data of what, you know, the other cities are paying, and then we can take a look at that and have a, have a discussion. You know, it's only as good as where we want to use the comparables to. There's 411 cities out there. As the, as we do with our unions and our non-bargaining, you know, we, we identify comparable cities that we're gonna use, that's something else that we may have to have a discussion later on, which cities we want to use in that comparison. And I think it's, I think it's important to mention, you know, we have a 75th percentile mentality that we've been applying across the board, and if, if that's good for, if that's good for our employees, that should be good for us as well. So, you know, I definitely want to see where that 75th percentile number is as well. So that's where I'm at. Councilmember Long?
Well, to, to me, it does matter, so I think as far as clarification for direction to staff, I would prefer if each one of us said exactly where we want that data to come from and whether or not, I know you had mentioned, oh, reach out to League of Cities, and if not, maybe get the third party. I'd be opposed to either one of those. It has to be us. I mean, it's not, this is objective data, it's not, there's nothing analytical about it. You can Google, hell, I can Google, you know, what the salaries are for each one of these municipalities, and it is what it is. There's no appearance of impropriety with the fact that a certain municipality lists their salaries at what, what they are. So there's no way that our staff wouldn't be able to do that from an objective basis. But if, if you really wanted to flush it out, if that was the case, and we were spending more money on consultants when we already pay, you know, what we pay for staff and salaries to, to do the work, at some point, we've got to do the work. So, you know, for me, if we were going down that road, then we might want to repull everybody to see whether or not there's even any appetite to put, if, to me, I'm a hard no on the, the number figure on the ballot. I said it was fine, because I thought we were gonna have a discussion if we're gonna spend more taxpayer dollars on a study. The end, it's inevitable that the end result is if it's adding $5 to our salary, it's gonna fail. I can guarantee you. So throwing, if we were gonna look at it internally, come up with some numbers and discuss it, fine, but if we're spending even a dollar on a study to, to tell me what I already know and can guarantee is gonna fail, then I'd rather just dispose of that completely. There's another piece of the compensation that they propose that I would, I would prefer to look into, but as far as setting a hard figure and putting it on the ballot, zero chance, whatever the figure is. So that, that's where I'm at, when I say, as far as my vote, and I'm only one, if we can get staff to look it up and figure out what the numbers are, it shouldn't be hard, it's gonna take some time, but it shouldn't be hard, it's not a formula-based, that's fine, and we can talk about it, but if we're, we're paying a hundred grand or more for somebody to do what somebody could do on Google in a couple hours, I wouldn't support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaduk?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually put my light on, because you were speaking and said that, how do we want to come up with the data, and I was going to say that it should be similar to a municipality that manages a budget our size. However, with what Councilmember Long just said, I agree, I don't want to pay anyone to come up with this information that we can just look up, and I, I mean, I'm a loan officer, I'm doing a loan for a gentleman that's a mayor in a different state, in a different city, and he makes more than us, and it's a much smaller municipality, we can find the data, so I don't want to pay to find that. But it should be similar to the budget that we are managing. That's all, thank you.
All right. And we also have, and I'll let the city attorney see his light on, there was a recommendation to have our city auditor be able to pull that information and, and direct her office to do that, so we have that option on the table. So I just want to mention that. Mr. City Attorney?
So that the members of the, of the council know, my office did get the 50-city information, and that is available on the spreadsheet. I don't think you've had the privilege of seeing that, but the commission has. I'll make sure you all get that. That may be a starting point, you may be satisfied with that information, but clearly, you don't have that at this point in time, but that's something I will get with, to you immediately, and it may ultimately answer what it is, while Councilmember Long has seen it. That may ultimately alleviate what you are looking to accomplish by having that information that already exists. And if there's additional stuff, whether it's the auditor, whether it's my office, it, it doesn't make a difference, we can certainly provide that.
Okay. All right, that'd be great information to have. And I, I would assume that was up-to-date information you had on those 50 cities?
Would have been done within the last, at least, six months.
Okay. All right, sounds great. So maybe provide that information first, that would give us opportunity to review that information, and then maybe we can have a further discussion on November 12th on that, on that item. Councilmember Steinke?
Thank you, Mayor. I am 99% sure that this information is available to Florida League of Cities. I think that's why, one of the reasons why we're a member, is so that we understand how things go on in other cities, that we hear best practices in other cities, and that we have information coming from the other cities, and there are things that they can help, you know, refine that list based on form of government, population, size of budget, and so, you know, certainly, a strong mayor form of government is, is different than our form of government, and that will affect compensation. And so as we look at similar, it wouldn't necessarily be same geographic size, it would also have to be population, it would also have to be what percent are they built out? And so, and so Florida League of Cities has that type of information for any of us to go on and say, hey, what's the average mayor make in the United States? I mean, yeah, you can Google that stuff, but it, it needs to be a little more refined than that, and I think that's one of the reasons why we're members of, of Florida League of Cities, and so if we can, you know, solicit them, say, hey, this, this is what we need, what do you got for us? Certainly, the list that the attorney's office put together, we can look at that, too. Better to have more information than we need than not, not enough information, so we can look at that, and if Florida League of Cities can produce something for us that's a refined list, that kind of matches the cities most similar to, to us, and it's no charge, it's a part of our membership, I think that's the way to go. And who cares who orders it, whether it's the auditor's office, or city manager's office, or the city attorney's office, it's gonna come from Florida League of Cities, it's not gonna be tainted information, if anybody's concerned about that. That's, that's my point. Thank you.
And just to let everyone know, while we were sitting here and having the discussion, I had text Jeannie Gardner, CEO of Florida League of Cities, and I said, do we have salary information that is up to date for all the cities involving the salaries for council and mayor? So I've sent that to her. So if I get a response while we're here today, I'll let you know what that response is. And they probably had some, some of that information, as you had said, hopefully, it's up to date, but I'll let you know soon, soon as I know. All right, so it sounds like this wraps up. The two items that received the, the majority of the vote will be taken off of consideration, and then the other six items will move forward and have some additional conversation on, on our November 12th, and also gives us time to take a look what we, if we have any recommendations of any other items. So I think that's how we'll move forward to the November 12th, where we can have more of a discussion on these six items, and this gives the city attorney some time as well to look through the, the wording, and if you, if you want to make any recommendations of, of how that wording is presented, or a different way of wording that particular item. So I think that's how we'll move forward. I will tell you, I got a text back from Ms. Gardner, and her text is, I'm not exactly sure what the latest data we have, but I will send you what we have. So as soon as I get that, I will make sure I forward it to all the other council members and the city attorney. So with that, any other discussion on this topic? And again, I just want to thank the Charter Review for all your hard work during, during those weeks that you were meeting, and appreciate you serving the community. It's 10:25, why don't we take a 10-minute break and come back in 10 minutes, and we'll move on to the next topic of discussion. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is 4A, number one, non-bargaining total compensation study. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you to start with.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to turn this presentation over to our HR Director, Nancy Deutsch. This is the last of the groups of employees that we have to implement our compensation studies. We've dealt with police, fire, and the general unions through negotiations. However, non-bargaining is not represented, but we did complete our analysis and have an implementation plan that will be coming before you. So we wanted to make sure we presented to you the output of the study, how we got here, and then you will see the new compensation schedule at a future council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to our HR Director.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Nancy Deutsch, Human Resources Director. As you may recall, council approved Resolution 39-25 in April of this year, which authorized the city to enter into an agreement with Baker Tilly LLC to perform a compensation study. We have the project team here from Baker Tilly to review their analysis of non-bargaining positions, to provide their recommendations, as well as answer any questions that you may have. With that said, it's my pleasure to introduce Sarah Towne, who was the manager on this project with Baker Tilly.
Thank you, Nancy. Good morning, everyone. As stated, my name is Sarah Towne. I'm the compensation manager for our classification and compensation team at Baker Tilly. Today, I want to be able to walk you through the results of our comprehensive classification and compensation study for the city of Cape Coral, specifically focused on the non-bargain positions. I'll walk through our complete methodology, have an opportunity to ask any questions as I go, and then we'll prepare with our recommendations for our brand-new pay structures and implementation strategy. So we worked through a five-phase process with the city, starting with project initiation, where we started with planning meetings to understand the current state of classification and compensation, understanding your current challenges and needs when it comes to recruitment and retention of these positions. We had a department head questionnaire that went out to get some leadership input as well, and then a very large data collection effort, looking at your existing job descriptions, your policy structures, your handbooks, organizational charts, a pretty large census file with all the names of the employees that we're working for as part of the study. Using the existing job descriptions is the forming of the basis of the study. We wanted to look at updated job descriptions and make sure that they are appropriate and reflective of the work being done. Using those job descriptions, we go into phase two, where we start by reviewing all of the titles. We reviewed all titles and made recommendations for adjustment. We want to make sure that the title is appropriate and reflective of the work being done. If it's a coordinator not coordinating anything, if it's an analyst not analyzing anything, then we recommended a more appropriate title. Then we conduct a job evaluation. Baker Tilly has its own point factor tool called SAFE, stands for systematic analysis and factor evaluation. It's what the city will use moving forward to evaluate positions and how they compare internally to each other. It's establishing a hierarchy of jobs and understanding the nature and level of the position. It is a measurement of the position, not the person in the role. That's what makes us federally compliant with the Equal Pay Act. And it's based off of these nine compensable factors. We look at the typical ones, like education and experience, the minimum qualifications to fill the job, not what the individual currently holds. We look at the level of work or the complexity of the job, who you're interacting with on a regular basis, the physical demands, the working conditions, or those environmental exposures, whether the position has autonomy and discretion to make decisions, what's the impact of those decisions on the organization, and then the type and scope of supervision exercise. The result of this process is a score for every single position in the organization. It allows us, again, to compare positions internally. Not all managers are the same. They may both have manager in the title, but some managers have higher education and experience requirements. Some managers supervise more people. Our process allows us to take those factors into consideration. While we were doing that, looking internally, we were also out to market, looking externally. So we partnered with the city to identify comparable and competitive peer organizations to include in the study. These are organizations that look like you, work like you, are similar in size, that could be revenue, population served, or the number of employees. We also look at the type and scope of services provided, whether these are organizations that are geographically close to you or experiencing similar growth patterns. This process was not Baker Tilly coming in and saying, these are the peer organizations that you should compare yourself to. We started this process by asking and looking at leadership. It was ultimately the city that decided who these 10 public peer organizations were. We took 127 positions to be included as benchmarks as part of the survey. That's 123 from our non-bargain and four from our police and fire command staff. When we go out to the market, we are not just looking at title for title, we're actually looking at the job duties and responsibilities. This is a critical part of our quality control. We want to make sure that the position is appropriate and reflective, and that they're doing similar work. You may call it a coordinator, but they may call it a specialist, but if the work is fundamentally the same, that's what we're looking for, a quality match about the job duties and the minimum qualifications. Once that data comes back in from those peer organizations, we do make some adjustments to it, something like work week. If another organization is on a 37-five-hour work week, we want to make sure that the annualized rates are comparable. We may age the data if it's not for the current fiscal year. Thankfully, that was not the case here. We all have up-to-date data. And then we do a geographic cost of labor adjustment as well. I'll talk a little bit more about what that is. It's not the same thing as cost of living. It's a little bit different. But most importantly, we do not weight the data. There is no one peer that's given preference over another. It's really this law of averages that we're trying to get to. So these were the 10 public peer organizations to be included in the study. We are able to collect and compile data from nine of those. Unfortunately, Hialeah was not able to provide us with their data at the time. These were for the 10 organizations specifically for our non-bargain positions, but we do have separate peers for the police and fire command staff. These were using the same peer organizations that we used for the bargaining groups. So for fire, we have Fort Lauderdale, Miramar, St. Petersburg, and Tampa. We were not able to collect data from West Palm Beach for that group. For police, we got all five peer organizations to provide their data. Little bit about that adjustment that we make to the data. Most folks are familiar with cost of living. It's the amount of goods and services in a given geographic area ebbs and flows with the economy. What we are looking at is the measurement of compensation being paid, or the cost of labor in a given geographic area. It's influenced by cost of living, but it's really directed by the supply and demand of labor. This data comes from the Economic Research Institute. They have a geographic assessor tool, which allows us to drill into a specific geographic area, in this case, the city of Cape Coral, and understand what is the cost of labor. Your current cost of labor is 94.1. That's off of a scale of 100, the United States' average being 100. So you're about 5.9% less than the United States' national average for your cost of labor. Take that same indicator standardized by the national average for each of the peer organizations, and then you can see the blue column called cost of labor adjustment. That's how much we're either adjusting the data by, up or down, to make it a good apples-to-apples comparison with the city of Cape Coral. All of the data that we're standardizing is less than 10%, or not greater than 10%, which is well within our thresholds for comparable agencies. This data isn't being adjusted by too many differences. Do the same application for our police and fire command as well. Again, all very similar in terms of cost of labor adjustments. And then the results of this information. So I mentioned that we took 123 positions to market as benchmark positions. Of those, 120 had sufficient data. We require at least a match of a quality amount of three matches, quality matches, to be able to calculate a market value. We require that threshold because it's kind of hard to We require that threshold because it's kind of hard to say, "This is the market," when you only have a comparison between one and two other agencies. So we only had three positions out of our full-market study that had less than three matches, which means our study yielded market values for 98% of the benchmarks that we took to market. And then the strength of that data, benchmarks had on average about five and a half matches per average. Half of the dataset had actually had six or more matches. So the more matches we have for each of those benchmarks, the more confident we are that that's the true market value for a position. And that's our goal, how many viable matches do we have? When we start to look at the overall averages and how you're comparing to your stated compensation philosophy of desiring to be at the 75th percentile in the market, we look at the full range, the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum. So at the 75th percentile, the city is currently 4.3% above market at the minimum, 0.7% below market at the midpoint, I would say that's at-market at the midpoint, and 5.5% below market at the maximum. We look at the full range because it's important to not just look at starting salaries. We absolutely want you to be competitive and be able to draw talent into the organization, hire appropriately. But we don't want you to become a training ground where you can hire them, train them up, and then they leave for another organization because you're not competitive across the full range. That's what we're seeing here right now with your current pay structure, leading at the minimum, matching at the midpoint, but lagging at the maximum. So in taking this into consideration is what we've used to realign or recalibrate your pay structures to be market-competitive at the 75th percentile. The results for our fire and police command staff in total, those were four positions that we carried. They all had sufficient data. All of them had between four or five matches. And then we looked at that same kind of threshold, understanding where they are in relation to the market at the 75th percentile. Bit of a different story here. This is showing that for these four positions, they are currently 16.3% below market at the minimum, 4% below market at the midpoint, and 4.8% above market at the maximum. This is entirely due to the fact that they are currently on the non-bargain pay structure and just have very wide-range spreads. That distance from minimum to maximum is limiting your minimums from being competitive, but also keeping your maximums well above market. So, one of the recommendations that we had is to look and address these positions specifically. So using this information of the job evaluation scores internally, the market data externally, we go into Phase Four. Phase Four is our pay plan development. It happens in three stages. We start with looking at your existing pay plan, or the pay structure, and making adjustments. Then we look at position placement in terms of grade assignments, where should all of the positions go? And then we finally look at people. Once we have the pay plan built and the positions aligned appropriately, we can plug people back into the conversation. So I'll walk through each of these stages and how we conducted our analysis, but made all of the recommendations tailored to the study's results. I'll start with your current non-bargaining pay plans. Technically, we have two, three pay structures for the non-bargaining group. That means a general group, an IT non-bargaining group, and then at the very top, you see we have three grades for ELT. Those are our leadership department head positions, deputies and department heads. And this is what it looks like if they were all consolidated into one pay structure. It is an open plan, meaning open from minimum to maximum. There are no designated steps. Employee salaries fall somewhere between those values. It's 32 grades, starting with our NB 104, all the way up to our ELT 3. But not all grades are currently in use. You can see these red grades on the chart. Those are grades that do not have any positions currently assigned to them. So we have a lot of, I'll call it, wasted space in our existing pay structure, or grades that are not currently being utilized. What we look at in terms of the health of an existing pay structure is something called range spread. That's that distance from minimum to maximum. It should be appropriate and tailored to the learning curve of the position. So as somebody comes in at that minimum and they get general increases in performance, they should move as they approach that midpoint or the market value of their pay plan. Wider range spreads just mean a longer distance for that learning curve, the slower they are to approach that market value for their position. We do like to see more tailored range spreads, narrower at the bottom. Again, we're thinking about the positions that are maybe in these earlier grades. That learning curve is a little bit shorter. They can get up to speed within a handful of years versus the top end of our pay structure that has our leadership. They have a wider variety of tasks, a lot more responsibility and impact on the organization. That learning curve is a little bit wider. One of the other things that we look at for an existing pay structure is the midpoint differential. That's the distance between each grade at the midpoint. And right now, we have an average of 4.3% between grades. It leads to this very flat structure, as you can see by this chart on the right. It's a very flat structure in the very beginning, and then it ramps up very quickly at the end towards our leadership roles. That distance is mostly 5%, then it dips down to about 2%, 3%, and then all of a sudden, it jumps up to 7%, 8%, 10% at the top end of our pay structure. It's very uneven. It's very unpredictable right now. We want to see a little bit more predictability and a much more dedicated adjustment as positions move up into this pay structure. The current starting minimum wage for the city is $21.79 an hour for our non-bargain group. That is represented at this NB 104, an annual minimum of $45,323.20. So looking at the adjustments that we needed to make to market and the current pay structure, we have redesigned and built a new proposed non-bargaining pay plan. Similar in form and function, but it's going to look a little bit different. So here, it's still an open plan. It's open from minimum to maximum. There are no defined steps. Employee salaries fall somewhere between these areas. It's 25 grades numbered 30 through 55. That's just so we get a very good sense that this is a brand-new pay structure, and we have a lot more opportunity to actually assign positions to each of these grades. In an open-range pay structure, midpoint is key. Midpoint is our anchor to market. So if the city has a stated compensation philosophy or a desire to be at the 75th percentile, that's what we're anchoring, your midpoints, to be at the 75th percentile of the market ranges. That's what we've done here. This pay structure is aligned to the 75th percentile. We've narrowed these range spreads, though. Now, range spreads, the minimum and maximum, expand and contract around that midpoint. So we're narrower on the front end to have that learning curve appropriate for those positions, starting at 50%, gradually going up to that 60% range spread for our top leadership positions. This will allow us to have our minimums competitive, but also ensure that our maximums remain competitive with the market as well. We've tailored the differential between each of the grades. So now we have a much more expanded differential. We had 4.6 previously. Now it's 6%. That's a dedicated jump. It leads to a much smoother progression, as you can see in this chart. It's not varied. It doesn't have that flat front. It doesn't ramp up quickly. It ramps up very gradually over the course of the pay structure itself. The new starting minimum wage for the city is proposed to be $22.69 an hour. That's represented at that initial grade, 30, for the minimum, an annual salary of So one of the questions we often get is, "How do you know? How do you know what percentage to get between grades? How do we start at this 5% and then go to jumps at 7% or 8%? How do we get to this number? How do we know if our range spreads are appropriate?" Well, it's not magic, and it's not simply something that you can Google, but we can certainly do it by math, and a lot more of our regression analysis is how we get there. So this is a tool. I'm a giant data nerd, so regression analysis makes me really happy, and I'll talk to you about it all day long. But this is the tool that allows us to understand, is your pay structure aligned to the market at your stated compensation philosophy? Each one of these blue dots represents a benchmark position, where we understand what the job evaluation scores are, as well as how they are aligned in the market. The dark black line in the middle is our regression line, our line of best fit through the data. That tells us what is the market doing right now. And then our proposed pay structure, the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum, is just aligned to that pay structure. That's what we want to get, is our proposed pay plan aligned to the market values. And that's what we've done here. So this is a good overlap in understanding how SAFE or our job evaluation scores mirror and play with the market. We have about a correlation of 82%, 83% here. This is what tells us what adjustments we need to make to the overall pay structure, but it doesn't tell us where the positions go. That's next. So we'll have to go line by line, position by position, to understand where each of the positions fall. But because we evaluated the public safety command positions separately in the market, and they were looking different as compared to market, the minimums were not competitive, maximums very competitive, I mentioned that the current limitations of putting them in the non-bargain pay structure are limiting where they are now. Our recommendation is for a separate public safety command pay plan that is specific to the positions of fire marshal, fire division chief, and deputy fire chief, and on the police side, police captain and deputy chief of police. The reason for this is mainly because of market, being market-driven and wanting to be competitive in the market at the 75th percentile. If we keep these on their current pay structure, those range spreads are just too wide. Current market is telling us that they're closer to about 25%, 30%. And so you can see that what we've done here is try to build them a pay structure that limits overlap or compression between those that are in the bargain group and where these command positions fall. So we have developed a new open plan. It's still open from minimum to maximum. Employee salaries fall somewhere between those areas, but it's aligned to be market-competitive. It's aligned at that 75th percentile at the midpoint. In order to get there, how we have to adjust this is looking at our range spreads. So we've narrowed these range spreads to be more appropriately aligned to market at 22%, that distance from minimum to maximum, much more appropriate given the position's sensitivity to market. We've expanded the midpoint differential, meaning the distance between each of these grades. What we had previously was just narrow differential between, say, an example of a police lieutenant and a police captain. That led to a lot of compression challenges and compression issues. So we've expanded those differentials to make sure that our captains have enough distance and separation between those that they are supervising. What I mean by avoiding compression is we have somebody that could potentially earn a maximum as a police lieutenant of $152,859. And what we look at is that somebody that is supervising them, a police captain, that's fully proficient in the role, should not be earning more or less than them. So we want them to be able to have enough distance and separation. So somebody that is fully proficient around that midpoint of a police captain would earn $172,782 base salary, and that is the goal. We have enough distance and separation between these positions. Similar between our battalion chiefs, a maximum they could earn is $148,112, having enough distance and separation between those and our division chiefs. The division chief, who's fully proficient, could be earning $163,997. And that's our goal, is having enough distance and separation and avoiding compression between the ranks. So, once we have the pay structure itself built and designed, and we have an appropriate number of grades, we have to determine where each of the positions go, using all of the available data, the job evaluation scores, the market data. We run that through our regression analysis, and then we go line by line, position by position, to make sure that each of the positions in this pay structure are appropriately graded. So we graded 120 unique positions, and they're classified to a grade in this new proposed pay plan. It's initially built based off of existing equity, where they are right now. We don't want to move in a position lower than where it is currently. But then we make adjustments. We make adjustments from there, based on the job evaluation scores, based off of those job descriptions. We adjust based off of market. We look at the career progression. So if an entry-level position is moving based on market, it has what we call the accordion effect on the rest of the progression. We look at supervisor-subordinate separation, ensuring enough distance between those supervisors, ensuring that they're not earning less than their subordinates. As we're doing this process, it is all about the position. We're not considering the person in the role at all. We may have an employee who has been long-term with the city, who's a high-performing individual, let's call him Joe. I love Joe. He's a great employee. We want to keep him around. But let's be honest, if Joe wins the lottery and he's out of here next week, the position still exists. And so our purpose of a classification and compensation study is to ensure that the position has an appropriate value. And then it's about what the individual brings to that role. So when we're assigning positions to a pay grade, we are not considering the person in the role at all, their performance, their length of service, even their existing salary. Once we have determined the positions, which we did do in part with our project team, as well as reach out to department heads to have a preliminary review and finalize with those grade assignments, we then can plug people into the conversation. Where are individual salaries at in comparison to our new recommendations? And one of the strategies that we want to account for is compression. Compression refers to a scenario where we have new employees that are coming at the same starting point, or even leapfrogging over more tenured employees. It leads to compression within positions. And we have a fair amount of compression right now across the organization. This chart is representing some of that compression issues. Right now, what we look at is the time in position, or how long you've been in your current role. You may have been with the city for 20 years, but made manager last year. We want to move you appropriately through your manager pay range. And so what we look at is range spread, that zero representing the minimum and 100 representing the maximum, and how employees have moved through these existing range spreads, or moved through these existing structure. And you can see that we have several employees that have five, six, eight, 10 years of experience and are not yet at the midpoint, meaning they're not even at that halfway point between their minimum and their maximum. Ideally, and that should be tailored to the market, but I would assume that somebody that has been in their role for six, eight, 10 years is probably pretty proficient in their role, and they should be at or near the market value for their position. So our recommendation for implementation is to alleviate some of that compression by moving employees further into their range relative to their time in position. So we look at employees that would receive a 3% adjustment for each year that they've been in their role, capped at 10 years, and that is from the new proposed minimum. That's not from their current salary. What we do is we say, "If you were hired today and you received general increases over the past 10 years, where should you be within this range?" It allows us to adjust individuals that have more years of experience in that role further into that. Any employee whose current salary exceeds that calculation would retain their existing salary. Importantly, though, for your concerns, is that our recommendations for an implementation scenario will not require any additional funds. And so this will be accomplished through and within the existing budget process, but our process and our recommendations were comprehensive. That includes adopting the new pay structure and doing this implementation scenario based off of alleviating compression that we talked about. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but we do just urge the city to approve our new proposed pay structure for our non-bargain group that has been tailored to the market to more appropriately align to your compensation philosophy at the 75th percentile, and then approve the position grades that have been established based off of internal equity and market data results, and that have been gone through with the project team and department leadership. I'll leave you with our contact information, but is there any questions that I can answer at this time?
Thank you very much for the presentation, very detailed. Councilmember Stonkey.
Thank you, Mayor. Fabulous job, great data assembled in a way that's easy to understand, and very well presented. Thank you. I did have just a confirmation. I'm assuming it, but I'm just for confirmation. On your slides 9 and 10, as you're looking at the market assessment results for both non-bargaining and command staff, are those assessments of X% above and below market, is that post the cost-of-living adjustments based on geography? Those geographic adjustments that you show on 8, when you're saying we're above or below market, is that post-geographic differential?
Yes, it is. It's after we've adjusted for cost of labor.
Okay, great. That's my only question. Thank you.
No, it's easy. Anything else?
Councilmember Kilring.
Yeah, a question. You mentioned that an employee who had been lagging in progressing through his grade, that you were able to move that forward without making a salary adjustment?
Well, they'll receive a salary adjustment if they, once we have looked at this implementation scenario of where should they be within this range. So there are several employees that would receive adjustments based off of our implementation recommendations.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Not all, but yes.
Any other questions regarding the presentation? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, can, uh, what type of direction are you looking for here today?
Uh, City Council has to approve the classification schedule, so we'll put that on the next agenda for the approval, the November 5th.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next topic of discussion. Just want to remind everyone, Chapter 26 Charter School Authority amendments that has been removed from the agenda will be brought back at our November 12 meeting. Uh, the next item is Cape Coral Seahawks Incorporated lease agreement. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And we'll turn this presentation over to Joe Patrella, our Parks and Rec Director.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Today we'll be presenting the term sheet for the R Seahawks license agreement. Uh, we've been working on this for quite a while, and we've, uh, met with the organization several times, and we've come up with these terms for you to review and give us direction on where we would like to go, um, with the actual license agreement. Where do we start this thing here? How do you do a presentation? Ah, there we go. There we go. All right, just a little history about the Cape Coral, R Seahawks organization. They are a nonprofit organization. Uh, they're incorporated on August 27th of 1980. Their purpose is to actively promote the construction and flying of all types of radio-controlled aircraft and cars. They're sanctioned by the Academy of Modern Aeronautics. The club is ranked number 17 of 2,500 clubs, with many members having relocated to the area because of the, uh, the hobby and the property that they utilize up at, um, Festival Park. There's over $60,000 invested in the facility improvements and maintenance by the club. There's approximately 265 members currently, which range from elementary school children to retirees, and there are over 1,000 members that have participated in, since the founding. They do a lot of community involvement. Uh, there's the list of what they've been doing. The next one's coming up is November 8th at the Warbirds. That's a Tony Stout commemorative. The picture to, uh, the right is, um, Special Pops attending their event, which that will be held, um, coming up in February. Uh, they have a blast when they go up there, and the, the members are really supportive of that program as well. They annually donate to our Parks and Recreation Department, the Mayor Scholarship Fund, caring Center of Cape Coral's Toy Drive, and Academy of Modern Aeronautics Education Fund. So they're active in our community, and they're definitely committed to supporting events and activities, uh, that promote Parks and Recreation activities, so, and especially, um, flying and race car driving. So we'll get into the term sheet, just kind of basic overview, the license agreement term sheet. The first is license grants to R Seahawks use of Seahawk Airfield at Festival Park. They have a divide, defined designated flight area box. I think that'll be Exhibit C that shows you that. Um, we sent those over to you yesterday. Apologize for getting to them late. Flying operations are limited just to those areas in that flight box. The initial term is 10 years, uh, would be 2026 to 2036, starting on January 1. They do have an option for two, five-year extensions possible with termination, if the city may terminate within a 30-day notice. So, um, we've built that into the agreement. Their permitted, permitted use is flying operating radio-controlled airplanes and cars. They host, must host four community programs per year. As we've seen earlier, they do more than that, which is great, and, uh, great for our community. Although the uses require the city manager a designated approval. And access hours are 7:00 AM to sunset, seven days a week, 365 days a year. The annual use fee, R Seahawks pay, pays $1 per year, um, and their payment is due start of the agreement annually. Uh, that, just to kind of go back why we chose $1 a year, uh, the group is now, they haven't been paying the non-adverall or, or adverall taxes that are assessed. Uh, that was actually calculated in the size of the property. We thought that the taxes were, um, pretty tough for the group to be able to manage. I think it was over $10,000, and we actually removed them off of the mowing program. They're going to end up mowing a specific area to help keep those costs down with, with the mowing program, uh, empty lot mowing program. It would have been over $15,000 a year for them, and it's really a financial burden on their organization. So that's why we're proposing $1 per year use, so, while they take care of the taxes and pick up, uh, additional maintenance areas. Uh, they are responsible utilities, as I said, those taxes, sales use tax, and city assessments established by ordinance or resolution now. Maintenance and repairs, they're responsible for cleanliness, safety and compliance, lid removal, maintenance of asphalt runway, car track, and any R Seahawks installed improvements, landscaping on assigned portions, and that would be in Exhibit, uh, I believe it's Exhibits And city maintains other landscape areas, and that would be the lighter green on Exhibit D. Equipment and personal property, R Seahawks may install necessary equipment with approval, must remove property upon termination, and abandoned items become city property. Any alterations, they're allowed to, are at the R Seahawks expense with prior city approval. All improvements become city property upon termination, and the city cannot unreasonably withhold consent. Ongoing responsibilities for both organizations, uh, we're going to be holding quarterly meetings, which is probably between myself and the deputy director. We'll probably do, uh, uh, once each quarter, just do a quick phone call, or just see how everything's going. Uh, submit annual business plan within 90 days of fiscal year start. Uh, submit their IRS Form 990 by January 1 annually. Maintain good standing as a Florida nonprofit. Maintain auditable financial records, and the city has access to records with notice. Uh, with that, we do have a couple of members of R Seahawks here today. Joe Dollar, the president's here, and Bill Powell are here. If you have, want any questions for them, they'll be happy to come and answer them, or if I can answer any questions for you, I would be gladly answer them.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Kilring.
Yeah, Joe, thank you for the presentation, and guys, thank you for all you do for the city. Uh, I, you know, your hospitality's been fantastic. I observed and was really taken in by what all you guys do and continue to do throughout the year. I think it's a beneficial program. Uh, I'm really amazed at the technology that you bring to the fore in, in this, and, uh, the way that you bring youth into the program and teach you some aeronautical engineering aspects of things, too. Uh, I can't say enough about it. It's, it's a great program, and, and thank you for your efforts in, in helping the city out in a lot of different ways. So thank you. Thank you, Joe, for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Pleasure meeting you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager.
So we'll be bringing this to, uh, November 19th council meeting for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, next item on the gen, agenda is the citywide banner program. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to have Melissa Micky do this, uh, presentation.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Melissa Micky. I am the manager of the Office of Communications and Marketing for the City of Cape Coral, and I'm here this morning to, uh, present to you on the city banner program. The purpose, uh, this morning is going to be to present options, visuals, and recommendations for managing the street, uh, not the streetlight, I'm sorry, the city banners in Cape Coral. For this presentation, I am going to go over information about the city banner program. I'm going to ask you for direction on several items, including the schedule of the banner changeouts, some messaging options, and that the program, which was formerly run by the CRA, be run by the Office of Communications and Marketing. And we are seeking city council approval by resolution to establish city policy on this program. Today I will go over the history, the purpose and goals of the program, visual impact and branding, locations of the current city banners, the scheduling options, messaging options, recommendations from staff, and then, of course, we'll open it up for discussion. A little bit about the history of this program. Uh, the city banner program was previously run by the Community Redevelopment Agency, or CRA, in South Cape Coral. The South Cape Banner Program was created by the CRA and the City of Cape Coral in 2015 in an attempt to identify the South Cape CRA area, to activate the public space, add color and vitality to streetscapes, and to publicize events or promote programs of local nonprofit and not-for-profit organizations. The intent of the banner program was to place banners on available decorative streetlight poles year-round to foster interest in the South Cape Community Redevelopment area. The program allowed nonprofits and not, not-for-profits located in the CRA to place banners on decorative streetlight poles, and the city is now looking to expand the banner program by installing, excuse me, more banner locations along Cape Coral Parkway and Del Prado Boulevard, and additional locations may be considered in the future. As the banner program locations start moving out of the CRA area, city council has transferred the banner program in, to the city in 2025, just a few months ago. The purpose of this program is to enhance community image and communication using streetlight banners, or just banners. It doesn't have to be on a streetlight. The goals are beautification of our main corridors, support for city campaigns and messaging, increase community engagement. The banners beautify corridors, promote city campaigns, and help unify our public spaces with consistent positive messaging. Now, I want to show you a few pictures, um, and some examples of various city banners. You're going to see that one impactful, consistent design can strengthen the brand, uh, and provide for a strong visual impact, and I'm going to show you some examples of unified and alternating banner designs. Here you can see some unified designs and that impact that that has, and it reinforces the brand identity, while alternating designs, like you see here, can often dilute the effectiveness. And I'm going to give you a brief explanation of the current locations and future locations of these banners. Um, currently, you'll see on this map, in the red, um, areas I've highlighted where we currently have some streetlight banners. So the smallest, um, little red line at the bottom is Lafayette Street, that has 13 banners currently. The red line above that is Cape Coral Parkway and has 66 banner locations currently, and then above that further in is Southeast 47th Terrace, and that has 68 banners for a current total of 147 banner locations. We are currently, that green line that starts, it's on Cape Coral Parkway, it starts at Coronado, goes all the way to Palm Tree. Um, that is, um, a new portion of Cape Coral Parkway that will have 55 new locations. Those will be installed, uh, by February of 2026. And then also, and I'm sorry that it's not highlighted, but on Del Prado, from Cape Coral Parkway all the way to Coronado, we're going to install 111 locations, so there'll be a total of 313 banner locations, um, by February of next year. And now, this is an area where we're going to be seeking some council direction. So for our scheduling options, currently the schedule has, and I apologize, I think on my slide it says six changes. There's one that I missed. There's actually seven current changeouts, but the timeframes are a little bit all over the place, and so I'd like to recommend a little more consistency in regards to the changeout schedule. So currently, this changeout schedule has, um, basically a Quarter 1, January, February, March banner, then Quarter 2, April, May, June banner. July has a patriotic banner, and then August we switch it again, and it has purple heart banners. Then September and October have their own banners, and then we go back to patriotic from November 1 to the 15th, and then from November 16th through the end of December, December 31st, we have holiday banners. So, I'd like to change, um, those, you know, give you some different scheduling options, and, um, the staff recommendation is denoted by, uh, the bolded lineup there. So we do have the option of going monthly with our banner schedules. Um, that would require the most frequent rotation, it requires extensive staff, time, and labor, partially due to the frequency. It's not the staff recommendation. Uh, staff recommendation is the bi-monthly schedule, it has a moderate rotation, and increased, uh, variety of banners. It's recommended by staff because it's more manageable than the monthly changeouts, and it still offers that sort of new freshness that we think leadership is looking for. Um, and then finally, there's quarterly, that's an option, but it is the least frequent rotation. It is more efficient and more cost-effective, but it may not provide the level of impact and, and newness and freshness that leadership is looking for. Now, before making a decision on this, it's important to know the cost that it takes to change out these banners. So it takes, excuse me, three trade specialists to install and remove the 147 banners at a rate of eight banners per hour, and they use a bucket truck. So the install and removal cost of labor and the use of the bucket, bucket truck is a total changeout cost of $21,116. The staff time required for the changeouts is about three days. And I can give you a breakdown on the numbers on that if you need that, more information on it. So now we're going to move on to messaging options, another area where I'm going to look for some direction from council. Um, municipalities handle banners differently, um, and actually, I, I did a lot of research. There's not a lot of cities, um, that have banner programs, so I even dug into counties that have them, and then smaller locations, like if there's a beach area that has a banner program. And in the research that I found, um, first, we're going to go over the options that we have. So we have, um, of course, again, the staff recommendation is, um, bolded. Their option is, um, their one option is city-only messaging, which is, oh, sorry, there's three different options. City-only, opening it up to nonprofits, and then fee-based advertising. As far as, um, city-only option goes, it makes administration simple, it keeps the message unified, um, it limits third-party involvement, which could be a con, possibly, but it, it has consistency, branding, and allows for some control. If we open it up to nonprofits, this may increase community involvement, um, which is something that, you know, some council members may be looking for, but it can also complicate the scheduling and prioritization if you, issues. If two, uh, nonprofits want the use of the banner locations at the same time, how do you determine which one takes priority? And then some nonprofits may promote missions that conflict with the city's core values, policies, or public interests. Um, approving those types of organizations could create public backlash or even reputational harm if residents perceive the city as endorsing controversial causes. And then moving on to the fee-based option, opening the program broadly could turn what is intended as a civic beautification or community engagement program into a platform for political or social advocacy. And it also has some of the same cons as the nonprofit category regarding scheduling and prioritization issues. There is also the possibility of, um, as far as a pro, of a revenue, revenue potential regarding the fee-based or advertising option. But it's important to know that I have done a lot of research on it, and unfortunately, um, while there is the possibility of revenue, in the research I've done, I haven't found a Florida city or county that actually makes a revenue from their banner program. Some charge a fee, however, in most instances, the fee covers the cost of the install and removal, and then the entity must supply its own banners, and the banners, um, cost about $100, $100 each to create. So we're proposing the city-only messaging to ensure administrative simplicity, brand consistency, and avoid disputes about scheduling or content, and also because there doesn't really appear to be, uh, much revenue potential. So just moving on to the recommendations, I'm recommending a uniform design, um, scheduling, recommending bi-monthly, recommending city-only messaging, uh, for consistency and brand strength, simple administration, and to protect us from controversial and external influence. Um, we're also recommending that the program be managed by the Office of Communications and Marketing. It's a division within the city manager's office, and also, it's important for you, you may already know this, you may not know this, our office already manages the colors of the lights in the fountain out in front of City Hall, as well as the GOBO, uh, which is the, um, the design or graphic that's shown upon council chambers. So right now, there's a jack-o'-lantern on it for Halloween, um, so we do manage those. And then, uh, we are also going to be managing the light colors along Cape Coral Parkway and, um, Southeast 47th Street. And then we're also going to be requesting an annual approval via resolution for the banner messaging and schedule. And now I'd just like to open up the floor for council, uh, input and questions.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Melissa, um, the, on your slide nine, uh, so if I'm, if I'm looking at this right, the $143, uh, um, per banner, that doesn't include the actual cost of the banner itself?
The banners cost around $100 each to produce.
So does that move us, then, uh, to $243 per switchout?
The switchout is only for labor and the use of the bucket truck. I did not include the cost of banners in that.
Okay, so, so, so realistically, then, it's another $100 on top of the actual labor cost, the bucket truck and the personnel, that, that new banner going up there is $100?
One time, yeah.
And, and do we have a, like, a life expectancy of that banner? Are we using it two years in a row, three years in a row? Because if we're switching them, you're recommending by month- Because if we're switching them, you're recommending bimonthly, which it looks like the current program is six changes.
It's seven. I'm sorry, I have that wrong in here. It is, it's seven changes.
Current program is seven.
Yes.
You're recommending going to six.
Correct.
Okay. And is the thought that those six changes would be the six changes every year, and we'd reuse those banners?
Yes, we would reuse the banners.
Holiday season, you got one banner. Fourth of July season, you got one banner, that type of thing.
Correct. And I don't have, I don't have the data on the life expectancy. I can tell you that we created the banners currently up about three years ago, and they are starting to look a little faded. So it's probably two to three years, I would suspect.
Okay.
But I can look into that and get you more solid info.
So we've got a capital investment that we're looking at replacing about every two or three years, and then the labor and, of course, the machinery to get it done on every switchout.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Laster.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Melissa, for the presentation. I guess when I, when we originally talked about this, my thought process was that we would potentially create an opportunity for businesses to be able to purchase these and advertise if they wanted. For example, you know, we have Slip Away, which is beautiful. I actually ate there a few weeks ago and loved it. But say if a business like that wanted to advertise during season, or, you know, say there was another business, maybe a real estate business, or maybe there was a salon, you know, a beauty salon that wanted to advertise, you know, their business. You said that you did research to see if there were any other municipalities, and you said you didn't find any that had these programs?
No, I found them that have them, and I can pull up the ones that I've looked into. What I, what I have is, and you know what, let me pull up.
Yeah, if you would, I think that would be helpful, because I know in my city manager meeting yesterday, Mr. City Manager, we talked about that, and he said, well, you're looking at it more, you know, councilmember, you're looking at it more as a revenue opportunity. And yes, I guess I am, but also an opportunity for our small businesses or any business to be able to promote, you know, what they're doing. I mean, I think that this is a great opportunity for our local businesses, as well as our city, to be able to, you know, sell these potential advertisements. And, you know, I understand covering the cost of 21,000, you know, that could be pretty steep. You know, I don't know what bus advertising is going for these days, and I don't even know how to compare it. But, you know, even if there's a way to offer this opportunity to some of our local businesses, and maybe not necessarily that they cover the 21,000 to switch them out, but maybe it offsets that cost. So if you want to go through that, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Sure, so it's just, they're not all showing up at the same time, but the information that I've pulled, because not all cities do it, and not our top 10, Panama City Beach, Winter Park, Waukulla, the University Town Center, which is in Sarasota, which of course is not the municipality, but they do have it up there, Tampa, Miami, Fort Lauderdale has a River Rock area, Tallahassee, St. Petersburg, and then Orlando has them. And what I was able to pull was that most of those programs do not generate significant revenue. The fees charged generally cover the costs of installation, removal, and then maintenance, rather than producing a profit for the city. A few cities do charge modest fees per banner, structured primarily to recoup the logistical and operational expenses. There is, and there is one exception in Tampa, they, but their revenue is typically minor, and the program costs are barely covered. And then in Parkland and Panama City Beach, they also have fees, but the fees cover the banner costs, upkeep, and administration, not as a profit center. And I can go through the actual, you know, the ones in the chart as well. So for Panama City Beach, they have an annual schedule for events and public service. They do have an application process and a program fee. It covers installation, and then the themes are set up by the city. For example, they have graduation banners in May, public servant banners from June to November, and then they have Christmas banners and that type of thing, which might be a little more in the weeds than you're looking for. But there is, like I said, an application process and then a program fee, and then after the display, the banners are returned to the applicants. Winter Park does it for events and city events, and then nonprofits, the messaging is restricted. Sorry, I'm just looking through to see, and I don't, I don't, they don't, they don't have any fee-based banners there and are not making a revenue. Waukulla uses streetlight poles and public spaces for their banners as part of their Main Street revitalization. They recognize heritage, major milestones, and special youth art projects. They're managed locally, and then, again, not, not a fee-based scale, not a revenue-producing program. For University Town Center in Sarasota, it's the shopping areas that encourage advertising, and then they do have event banners on site, but they don't have a municipal program. So it's not something that, you know, is revenue-producing for the city. And then Tampa, I talked about a little bit earlier, but it does have a very extensive banner program. They have someone who actually facilitates it. It's Sherlock Banner Solutions, and I haven't, I don't have a lot of information on that entity, but they manage the applications and the installation, and so the city isn't making revenue off of it, but it does cover the management of the banner program.
So will you refresh my memory? When we used to allow, like, nonprofits like Kiwanis, or not Kiwanis, Rotary, when they do the art festival, we no longer allow that, right? We're not allowing them, the Pride Parade, the...
Well, we have, that's, that's going to be council's decision, since it's moving to the city.
Okay, I mean, I guess, I guess for me, you know, were they paying before?
My understanding is that they sometimes, I think, I think the city covered most of it.
Was it InKindmo? I can't remember.
Maureen Vice Assistant to the City Manager. It's actually been both.
Okay.
In the past, there was no cost, because the CRA board picked up the cost for installation, and then most recently, it changed to the cost to install. So they had to have the banners approved by CRA staff. The organization printed and paid for their own banners, and then they had to pay for the installation. So the cost depended upon how many poles they were utilizing. Over the last three years, only one other outside organization or nonprofit utilized the program that the CRA was offering.
Who? What was?
Pride Cape Coral.
Pride Cape Coral, okay. I guess, you know, for me, I know that the whole objective behind all of this was try to simplify and not have to pick and choose and reason why. I mean, I understand that. I have a couple of concerns. Number one, that the information would be stale, you know, that, that we wouldn't, if we did it the bimonthly, for example, that would be better to me than quarterly, because I just feel like that, you know, we could be rotating and having it be more vibrant and more, more information about our city and what our city offers. I mean, I like that aspect of this whole banner program. And I understand, you know, limiting it to just city stuff so that we don't have to pick and choose between what nonprofit, what business, what group. You know, I just, I personally hate to be so restrictive, because I feel like this is a real opportunity, as we have said many times today and other days, that we are a growing city. And then in terms of the city messaging, would that be something that your department would determine what that messaging was, and then you would just move it forward? We don't get involved? We don't have to pick it? That's staff, staff responsibility?
It is, yes. No?
It involves council approval. So if you, in the presentation, as Melissa mentioned, we would bring an annual resolution to City Council that would involve all of you to weigh in and provide input on that schedule and ultimately approve that messaging schedule.
Once a year, though, right? We wouldn't have to do it every month, every quarter, every time?
Right. The proposal was to do it annually, but if council wanted to do that more frequently or less frequently, we could accommodate that as well.
Okay. I mean, I guess for me, like I said, my stance is still the same, I think, as before, is I really see this as a great opportunity to highlight what's happening in our city, the different organizations that celebrate things, as well as, I mean, how long have we had that art festival? What was it, the 40-year anniversary, I think, last year? You know, being able to celebrate those things that we've had in our city, you know, historically, in addition to new opportunities, as I mentioned, some of the new businesses, like Slip Away, for example. You know, for me, I would, I would like to see us develop this a little bit more, flesh it out a little bit more, and instead of restricting it just to city, city messaging, I'd like to open it up or keep it open and maybe, you know, like I said, not charge the $21,000 per business, but if there's a way to charge something and then they, we offset the cost. To me, you know, we're still offsetting the cost. It's not going to be a true $21,000 every time we change it out to the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Kilrain.
Yeah, the current program is 147. You're looking at another 153 locations?
Correct.
So assuming our labor costs double then, approximately?
Correct, that's correct.
I'm in support of keeping it to the city and doing it. I was wondering whether or not the bimonthly might be two for a quarter and maybe quarterly to help control the cost. Do you alternately pursue that such that you can cover all the holidays with the bimonthly or quarterly?
Yes, and then that, that schedule would be, again, like Maureen had said, something that council would approve. But if it was bimonthly, we would put something together that would show, okay, January and February are, you know, could be something like shop, walk, dine. But then we could celebrate during holidays, you know, November, December would likely be holiday banners, patriotic banners in probably July and August. So it would be every two months, and again, council would approve it. I didn't, I didn't bring something like that forward.
Thank you. My only concern with opening up for nonprofits or other is being fair in the administration of that and the approval of those who can do it and versus not. I don't like picking winners, and I'm not sure that we can afford all of that without being in a position of being perceived as picking winners and losers in that game. So I'd be, I'd like to try and keep it to the city, and that'd be my support on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Stanki.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just doing some quick math, and by the way, I've been in cities that have a banner program that are very vibrant. It's, I think it's a great enhancement to the city and the feel of the city with the opportunity for messaging, especially for a lot of the events that we have here that we want to make sure people know about, the opportunity to have some dates on there and whatnot to, so people know what's going on and where. I think, I think it's a good thing to have. I do want to just make sure that we're talking about all the apples in the barrel, though, as Councilmember Kilrain brought up. We're talking about going to 300 of these, and so using the same math, it looks like we've got 300 at 143 apiece, takes us to 257,4 on an annual, on an annual basis. And if, in fact, we have 300 banners that are 100 bucks apiece, and they're, at max life, three years, we got to put 10 grand into banners each year to keep them fresh and whatever. So we're talking about a financial decision of 267,4-ish per year. So just a simple question is, is this already included in a budget somewhere with the forethought of doing this? Is that 267,4 in our budget already, or would that be something that we would have to be looking for extra dollars for?
We've been doing seven flips a year. So this would actually be bringing it down by one flip, if you go with staff's recommendation.
But we've been doing seven flips on 147 signs. Now we're talking about doing six flips on 300 banners, not signs. So it'll be an increase. Okay. And then, and then the last is, I think, I, in one way, I agree with Councilmember Laster, that this is a great opportunity for local businesses to be able to advertise and things like that. But then we get into the caveat of the potential of discrimination against one or the other. If you can only accommodate so many, why couldn't you accommodate the other? If we have it out for nonprofits, we have to be ready to do everybody, no matter, no matter who they are, what they represent, and whatever. So, you know, for unification and common messaging and impact and uniformity, I would probably, I'd probably move away from the income potential of, if you will, renting out the banners for two months before the next flip, with the thought that we could end up with, you know, major color differences and design differences, and one company battling another on the streets in the banners. So I think we keep it to a common messaging, at least where I would stand now. But I'm open, like I always am, to my councilmembers' opinions and positions on it, too. But that's probably where I come out first, is let's make this, you know, a city-run program and focus on the activities that we have here in the city and the seasons that we would go through as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Law.
Yeah, just for the sake of providing input, I would be in agreement with all the recommendations that you guys brought forward. Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess for me, it would be the same. I'd agree with the city staff's recommendation as how we run the program. So that, that would be where I'm at. As far as frequency, cost, all of those, how often you have to buy banners, that sort of thing, I think we could maybe have that discussion when we are approving the calendar for the year. And if it, if it looks to get too exorbitant, then we can change or modify how often we change, change those banners out. Hopefully, we could use those banners repeatedly over several years to try to keep that $100 cost down as much as we can. But as far as the structure of the program, I will support the staff's recommendation. I know some individuals did not speak, so, Mr. City Manager, do you want us to go down the lines so you get your consensus of as far as if it's going to be, what type of a program?
Yes, I mean, I do know that we, I have spoken with Councilwoman Laster, and so in respect to her thought for the program, I think it would be good to get the full counsel.
Okay, so basically, it's a yes or no, I guess, if we want to support the staff's recommendation. If it's a no, then I guess whatever alternative that you may like to see. So maybe we'll start with Councilmember Kudus.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually leaning towards Councilmember Laster's thought process, and I do think we should open it up to nonprofits and businesses. I thought that was the point of the program to begin with. However, I do understand that maybe the city should have precedence over the program, like if we have Red, White, and Boom, that that should take place over any other paid and bought-for advertising or nonprofit that wanted to use it. That's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you.
I can go along with the recommendations that are on page 11.
Same with me. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll go along with the recommendations. I think once you start, you know, trying to pick and choose, as Councilmember Kilrain said, that could open us up to some liability, and to me, the risk isn't worth the reward. So I'll recommend continuing with staff's recommendation.
Staff recommendations, go with me.
Staff recommendations.
I did want to lend voice, I had hit my light, because I certainly appreciate where you're coming from, and I see it. But that's one of those things where no good deed goes unpunished, that will definitely come back, because I think that happened in the past if you start digging. So staff recommendations for me.
I mean, you guys know where I stand. I mean, I, obviously, I'm, you know, I'll join the consensus, however, I just feel like we are really closing our opportunities, if you will, to potential. And hopefully, in a few years, maybe that, this position will change, depending who's up here. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Kudus.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanted to mention that the art fest that was mentioned is put on by a nonprofit, and those banners go up. So it's not a city-run event, however, those banners were up, and it's a huge event for our city, so that's kind of why I still stand with letting nonprofits use it, and it would still eventually be approved by council anyway. That's where I'm at.
If I may, the art fest doesn't put banners on our light poles. They may have banners that they put up, but they're not, they're not currently used in the banner program.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, you get the consensus you're looking for?
I did. We will bring it back as a resolution to memorialize the program.
Okay, thank you. All right, item five, charter review, commission recommendation. We heard that earlier and moved that up in the meeting. So we'll move on to the last, item burn store road widening discussion. I don't know if City Manager has any input, but I did add this to the, to the agenda for a discussion in light of some of the recent discussions from the county. for a discussion in light of some of the recent discussions from the county commission. And there's one segment of the roadway that still is unfinished. Maybe, Mr. City Manager, if you had the information, you can give us the historic background. I believe there's been three or four segments that have already been completed. I think there's one segment left. So any, any information that you would have there?
Give me a second while I pull up the presentation.
Sure.
Can I, can I fill the gap with some stand-up jokes?
Sure. Yes. Stand-up jokes?
Yes, because that's my second profession when I retire. You guys, are you guys ready for this one? Are you ready for this one?
Yeah, I have enough savings.
I already went to the restroom, so go ahead.
Whatever. So joke goes like this, real simple. I'm not going to get in trouble with my wife today. Okay, okay, I'll stick to being a council member, that's all.
Okay, I have plenty of savings when you retire.
I try, I'm a city manager. You got to be quicker, man, got to be quicker.
Okay. So a couple of things, we're in the backup. The first one is the segment of roadway that was completed. There were actually three, a south, a middle, and a north segment. The cost for these was $65,690,000. That was approximately, I think it was 4.7 miles. There is a remainder of the roadway project that is essentially, I think around five miles, and the evaluation matrix that came out of the PD&E is showing that roadway segment to be just under $190 million, so 189,855. And there were some additional questions that were asked by council members as to how many miles a road in the city are owned by different jurisdictions. So the state owns 33 miles of roadway, lane miles through the city. The county is 118 lane miles, and then the city is 3,145. So they're very, very small amounts of county and city, or county and state roadways in the city. Burnstall Road happens to be one of them, and the current estimate for the remaining piece is 189 million. The first five miles was 65 million. Thank you.
So I guess the discussion here today is, you know, there's been some discussion from county commission on whether the city of Cape Coral should contribute to any type of widening of the last segment. As you heard here, we've had several segments that's already been completed that was paid through, through the county. It is a county roadway that we are talking about. So I think that's, that's what we're here today to discuss, if we want to partner in any way. You know, I think it's important to note, some of the toll monies that we collect that are midpoint in Cape Coral Bridge typically is utilized for these projects in the past. I know I had asked staff for some revenue information on that, and I believe it was around $37 million, if I recall correctly, that we have taken in in toll monies. And as I'm sure most of us are aware, probably 90% of that monies are Cape Coral residents that contributed to that $37 million. Additionally, you know, we have an issue on Burnstall, I'm sorry, on Del Prado, where, you know, the county's not really maintaining that particular stretch of the roadway. You know, we've even asked them to put mulch down, as minimal expenses that is, and they've stated that that's not in their maintenance program or budget. So we're not even getting mulch on Del Prado Boulevard. I'd also asked several months ago, the amount of monies that our residents here in the city of Cape Coral pay in county taxes. And if I recall correctly, and I'm sure I could pull that up, I want to say it was about $112 million of their avalorum tax that the county collects. We pay 112 million as residents of Cape Coral into that, into that particular fund, which is about 22% of their avalorum tax. So we're, you know, our city's almost, you know, 25% population, and we're paying almost that 25% into their avalorum. So for me, my position's, you know, pretty clear. It's a county road, and the county should be paying for, for that particular project. There are no probably difference of a situation than we are. You got a minimal amount of money, and you have a lot of, a lot of needs, and you have to try to prioritize those needs. I believe this project is a priority, we need to complete it. It's a hurricane evacuation route, not only for Cape Coral, Pine Island, Matt Lachey. So I think it is a very important and viable project that through our metropolitan planning organization that we need to, to really push this, push this project forward. We have to seek maybe some state and federal assistance since it is an emergency evacuation route. So that's what my stance is on this particular project, is it's a county road, it's a county project, it should be paid for through county funds. You know, some people may state, well, what about our mobility or our transportation impact fees that we collect? I firmly believe that our city has many needs that, and through our mobility fee discussion, there's needs there that we probably will not be able to address soon. They'll have to be addressed later, and I think the county will have to do exactly that as well. So that's my position on it. And I will open it up for any council discussion. Councilmember Kilrain?
Yeah, Mayor, similar to what you just described, we've been talking at the MPO and trying to have priority put on this project for, since I've been there, and I'm sure it was happening before that. And we were very forceful in the last two discussions there, and we asked that it be prioritized. If you look at a lot of the projects that the county's dealing with, from a historical standpoint, city, when the county is managing roads through a municipality, those municipalities have not been contributing in, at least we confirmed for three out of the other five that we're talking about. The only ones we haven't heard from was Estero, I think, and Binyad Springs, right? I think that Fort Myers, Fort Myers Beach. So we had the other three municipalities who not contributed. There was one that had added some things into the highway that they paid for and supported, but that was an addition put on by them. With respect to it, I agree, it's a county road, the county has responsibility to manage it. And if the recent issues with, with the safety of the road have been brought into question by so many accidents up there, I think the county needs to reprioritize their efforts and get this up more closely to the top of the list. We had talked about before how long it takes to move a project forward within the county. This project has been around, and I asked the question in the MPO, it's been around many years, and it hasn't advanced very much. Matter of fact, the last estimate I heard was that engineering wasn't going to be completed until 2030, and funding on it is meager at this point. I think the order of magnitude is in the $20 million area that there's available funds. There was the potential look for federal funding for another $50 million in two tranches, and it sounds like that's not available right now. I had conversations with two of the commissioners, and both of them told me that in order to pursue this and have that joint meeting, and the discussion of that meeting would be in which they'd be coming after us to look at and apply our mobility fees. Of course, I had a negative response to that. So I think that that's where they're headed. I don't think it's the right way to do it. I think that the county has the responsibility. Again, we are, as you mentioned, we're paying 85% of the tolls on mobility fees. If you look at the distribution of highway work and other things that we need within the city, there are a meager number of miles in our city compared to our 3,145 road miles. So having, all of that being said, I think that it's, it's about time that I think the county reprioritized their, their slate of projects, and they put a little bit more effort in looking at this project. And again, I'm not questioning the engineering estimates of, or the construction cost estimate, but I think that you got to get out a fine pencil to look at that number. If you look at it, it's either order of two to three times the cost of what we did, what was done prior in 4.7 miles for this 5.1 miles is about three times the cost. We all know costs have gone up, but this isn't all that more complicated and exchanges onto the roadway. At least, it's a, it's a widening project. There is right-of-way there, the right-of-way isn't all that difficult to obtain. I'm advised by our county engineering. So I, I see all the pressure being on the county to do it, reprioritizing, recognizing the safety issue with the road, and they just really need a block hard net. So that'd be my position on it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Laster?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief. So sitting in the discussion with MPO, in MPO last week, week before last, Councilmember Kuduk, myself, Councilmember Kilrain, Councilmember Lehman, and Danell, you were there. And I think the shocking thing for all of us was the date, 2036. And although, I mean, I think it's pretty simple, as I explained to Mr. City Manager yesterday during our meeting, you know, just because no other municipalities have done it doesn't mean we shouldn't. And I say that because of the issues that Burnstall Road continues to have, I say that because of the importance of an evacuation route, all the things that we brought up in MPO to the two seated commissioners that were sitting at the table. And in my opinion, this is a safety issue. This isn't, you know, if, if, if us helping or partnering or collaborating somehow in the cost, the means, whatever, that's going to be faster than nine years from now, or 10 years from now, or 11 years from now, I think it's a no-brainer. I mean, maybe we set a precedence that, you know, timing is everything. And, I mean, how many emails did we receive on the latest crafts that happened, you know, on Burnstall Road? And I'm not, I'm not saying whether widening or not would, would help it. I think it would, but I can't say that for sure. But I guess my concern is that, you know, I don't think we, I think that's, that's an integral artery in and out of our city, and I just don't think we can wait, you know, 11 years to get that done. And I think if we need to figure out collaboration during our meeting with them, when we sit down and have our joint meeting with them, you know, that's something that we need to talk about, no different than the medians. I mean, to me, the median isn't as big of a priority as this road. And I did have a conversation with Commissioner Hammond a few weeks ago about the median, and he explained how, you know, they owned it, we owned it, and then we gave it back. And we talked about Florida-friendly, and how can we rip out what's there and just put in Florida-friendly so that the maintenance is very minimal? But, you know, I think our meeting with them is going to be pretty crucial in terms of talking, as you mentioned, Mayor, these priorities and about, about the taxes that, that our residents pay into Lee County for road impact fees, mobility fees. And, you know, although we say, yes, this is a county responsibility, I just, I think it's worth looking at things differently in this situation and partnering somehow so that we can achieve the common goal of making this road safer and getting it done faster than 11 years from now. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmembers Steinkie.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, earlier today, we, we had a discussion, and there were some, you know, pro and con points to at-large versus single-member district. I know that there are a number of, of our county commissioners that are, you know, vehemently opposed to single-member district and believe that for the county, at-large governance is the appropriate governance. This is a perfect time for them to demonstrate the value of at-large governance, and that is that a health, safety, and welfare issue inside of their county is addressed before a business issue is, is addressed. And I've been watching and involved with MPO for a number of years, and I've watched as the dollars that are collected are allocated to Aliko Road, Course Screw Road, all for business purposes and land development purposes, when the Burnstall Road issue is an evacuation and public safety issue. And so when, when we hear numbers that add up to somewhere in the neighborhood of a quarter of a billion dollars each year between bridge fees and avalorum taxes, that over the last 10 years, if none of that money was set aside for these types of needs throughout the county, on the west side of the river particularly, then, then that was a mistake. Those dollars, you know, should have been recognized as going to be needed to be used. And if there was a lack of wherewithal to recognize the true need for the collection of dollars for those types of initiatives, then that's, that's on the decision-makers. I was a proponent of taking the mobility fee in our city where I believed it need to be for these, for these roads, for these intersections, for the health, safety, and welfare of our Cape Coral citizens. I was on the losing end of that. Whether our county decision-makers, what they do with their millage rate for avalorum, what they, what they do with how they budget those dollars, that is up to them. But this is a perfect example of where, when you look at the entirety of the area in which you govern, and what is needed for health, safety, and welfare, and what's needed for business development, we'll see how that plays out. So I believe that, that the county is responsible for, for this piece of work, and I think that they should prioritize it that way, just like it's been done in, in every other city within, municipality within our county. The county takes care of the county's responsibilities. So I, I stand on the fact that we, we need to find a way for the county to, to get this figured out for us, for an evacuation route, as well as the health, safety, and welfare of those people that travel that road on a daily basis. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Danell?
It's, it's a tricky position to be in from my perspective. I was taken aback at that meeting when they talked about it being done in 2036. So that changed the game for me, because as you all clearly articulated, that's, that's a, it's an integral role for us here in Cape Coral that has to get done. Ladies and gentlemen, we only control what we control, so everyone recognizes that it's the county's responsibility. The question is, then, what can we do to impact the decision that we have nothing to say about for them? Message clear for me, I get it, I'm on board with everybody here. The piece that's missing secondarily, though, for me, is the fact that what are the dollars that we are paying into the coffers? What are we getting in return for? That's something that I look forward to addressing with them in our joint meeting. But between now and then, I want to, we need to get this moving forward, and if that means for this particular point in time that we can give, contribute our fair share, we have the masterminds in here, you know, whatever the percentage is, to put there to make sure that we've done all that we can do for the health, safety, and welfare for this particular project, I'm open to have that discussion. But I'm with you all the way with the fact that their responsibility, they need to figure it out. This is just, it's atypical for me. And, you know, we've got to get it figured out. 2036 is just not, it's not acceptable for me. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Kuduk?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Steinkie really nailed everything that I was going to say about, you know, Aliko Road and everywhere else in the county that they continue to focus on, rather than the health, safety, and welfare of the residents that they are representing for Pine Island, Matt Lachey. They like to talk about unincorporated, but they also represent us. And I said that, you guys were there present, I said that, I was bantering back and forth with our commissioner, who just wants to represent unincorporated Lee County, which is not fair to us. And he also wants to try to get Hudson Creek's mobility fee, which hasn't even come online yet, and that road already has fatalities. In fact, it was that Friday, we had MPO, and that Monday, the crew fatalities. So I don't know what we need to do to have them... So I don't know what we need to do to have them push this forward. If it means that we need to partner with them, I'm up for it. However, we need to put in signalization, because that's supposed to be our next commercial corridor. So they also control the road, so if we need to put in signals where we're at it, let's go for it. They started the PDNE May of 2020. Here we are, looking at 2036, sixteen years later, to actually finish the project. That's unacceptable, and all five of us that are on MPO have to continue to go and continue to be a broken record so that the other municipalities join in and say, just get it done for them. It's ridiculous that it's taking this long. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, a lot of what I was planning to say has already been said. You know, it's unfortunate, my position, you know, more or less, is that it's the county's obligation. It's unfortunate that, you know, to a certain extent, it seems like the county commission is trying to politicize a recent death to kind of shift their burden or obligation as far as the financial obligation to improve the roadway. But nevertheless, here we are. And so that's difficult for me, you know, to some of the others' points is, you know, core tenet, at least in my opinion, and it's obviously well-established, is that in our role as councilpeople, we're fiduciaries. But of course, the other core tenet is public safety. And so I could see, and to a certain extent politically, I commend them for trying to take that shot, to kind of put the ball in our court and say to the public, oh, this city needs to more or less put forward the funding, or now the onus is on us that we don't care about public safety. And that, I think, is the message that we need to change, to put the onus on them. So, you know, Councilmember Kuduk had said, well, what can we do to kind of push this through or pressure them? I think that's it, is just not cowering to, you know, I'll call it pressure, but I would say it could be extortion. You know, that, yeah. So it is what it is. The obligation is theirs. We've all sat on the MPO meetings, we see the dollars, they use our population for these DOT grants, if you didn't know that, that's a fact, to get the money, and then those same monies they allocate to, you know, the aforementioned roadways. It's a shame, you know, and for me, one-hundred percent, it's their obligation. The messaging needs to be that it is their obligation. The fact that city council, if we collectively decide not to fund it, is certainly not because we don't value human life, but it's because we value the obligations of commitments and deals in government and elsewhere, and that this is their commitment. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Kilrain?
Yeah, I'm not here to teach negotiation one-on-one, but I don't want to put another opportunity on the table in that they think that there's some slippage in our area. I think we have to go in hard, we have to go in solid, that it is their responsibility, and not let them think that we're going to back off that position. And, you know, from my discussions, they're certainly not thinking that way right now. They think that they can, just as Councilman Long had said, they think that they can flip the onus on us in that we're not caring about safety, and it's really in our backyard. Point is, it's their road, it's their responsibility. They divert funds to other non-safety, non-evacuation roads, and the fact is, this is long in the tooth, and it needs to get done, and it's their responsibility to do it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, it's important to remember, we are residents of the city of Cape Coral, but we are also residents of Lee County. And we pay our Lee County taxes, just like any other municipality or unincorporated area. And, you know, again, we're putting twenty-two percent of the avalorum dollars we're giving to the Lee County, but, you know, if you look what we're receiving in return of that contribution, it's very little. And, you know, it's unfortunate we find ourselves in this position, and I can maybe sympathize with them, but hey, it's their responsibility, they got to step up to the plate, it's their roadway. I would personally have a hard time telling our residents, hey, your tax dollars, we're going to use on a county project and a county roadway, you know, or, you know, we have to incorporate fees or higher millage rate because of it. I'm not in favor of that. So it's their responsibility, they have to figure it out, just like it's our responsibility on our three thousand lane miles that was mentioned earlier, how to do the improvements, intersection improvements, widening, whatever the case may be, that's on us. And, you know, I agree that we need to take a hard stance and make sure that they hear clearly from us that's their responsibility. I guess it would be, Mr. City Manager, I know you've had several discussions with council members on this. Do you, did you get the consensus of our position?
I did. I guess the question becomes, there was a request at the MPO to have a joint meeting at which the county manager was going to be directed to set up a meeting with me. Based on the public discussion you've had today, you still want to have that meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing that being the last item of discussion, we'll move on to Citizens.